Order, the Johnson County Council 2026 budget hearings for the second reading. If in fact you would, I would like to give a prayer this morning before we get started, if you care to join me. Lord, grant us the gift of clear communication in this meeting. May our words be guided by your truth, promoting understanding and effective collaboration. May unity be the foundation of our time together, and may your love guide every decision. But before we begin today, I also would like to pause in solemn remembrance of the victims of September the 11th, the families who continue to bear that pain, and all who suffer from its lasting consequences. I also would like to recognize the tragic loss of Charlie Kirk and others like him, individuals who regardless of differing viewpoints exercised their voices in faith, and who devoted themselves in ways that moved many throughout conversation and engagement, excuse me. May this moment remind us to honor those who have passed by coming together in respect, humility, and understanding. So I'd like to call for a moment of silence, please. Moving forward, Amy, do you want to do roll call, please? I'm sorry, excuse me. Pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would you do roll call, please?
Emma Lberton.
Present.
Connor Finn Myers. John Mowers.
Here.
Michelle Anne Graves.
Here.
John Dittmers.
Here.
Ron Bates.
Present.
And Melinda Griesmer is absent.
If she should come in, remind me to note that for the minutes, please. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get emotional. So we are ready to begin our second reading, and it looks like first up on the agenda is Mr. Reuter, and I believe he's online with us.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council. Amy had asked me to give the Council an update based on the actions that have been taken after the first reading, and also touch on the growth.
I'm sorry, Mike, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. I don't know if it's on our end or your end. It doesn't, it's not really loud.
Can we make it louder, Connor? Thank you.
Test, test, test.
I think we're still clicking buttons, Mike. Hold on just one moment. All right, try it again.
Test, test.
A little bit. Yes, there you go. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Council. Amy had asked me to zoom in this morning to give you an update on the actions that have been taken to date in terms of the budget reductions that you've made, also touch on the growth appeal, and that we're not going to mathematically qualify for the growth appeal on 26. So I'm gonna start there. I'm gonna start with a screen share, if that's okay. I may need access. I got the host disabled. Okay, I think I got it now. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I apologize. I had made an assumption that we would qualify for the growth appeal based on the mathematical calculation. Last year, when we appealed, our three-year average growth was 1.1177. And, excuse me, and this year, when we, we had a three-year average growth factor of 1.1176. So essentially, the three-year average remained the same. But the big difference that happened is supposedly the state average has grown significantly more in the sense that last year, the qualifying calculation was 1.0872, and this year it increased to 1.0991. I struggle with the idea that the state grew that fast on a three-year average, but nevertheless, that is what has been published in their memo. Although there are some typos in their calculations. In one section, the math is correct, and in another section, I believe there's some typos in their calculation. But nevertheless, that is the number they're using for the comparison of growth. And we are not growing 1.02 faster now than the state because of their increase. And so, again, our, our average virtually remained unchanged, but now mathematically, we've, we've dropped out of the qualification because of, of the state's average increasing. I do have another large client, that's similar situation, that, that was qualifying, and now suddenly is not qualifying, so you're not the only one, but nevertheless, that, that's where we are at this point. So I have updated the fiscal plan based on no-growth appeal, and, and the cuts, cuts that have been made to date, and I thought I'd walk you through that, what it looks like. Also, I believe Luke from the Highway Department is on, on this call as well. He had sent me an email yesterday afternoon describing how we would move forward and what he was going to request to the Council. This, this actually was a recommendation of mine to Luke as well, in how we would handle the bond payment going forward. And originally, in the 26 budget, there was a $12 million request with the idea that the $12 million is the carryforward that we always planned on using for the, for the project. We were actually planning on using $12 million from the general fund, $15 million from the edit fund, and then we'd be doing the $40 million bond issue to fund the first phase of, of all the highway projects. So what I've done is I've, I've restructured the fiscal plan a little bit. I have now created a new line in the fiscal plan to show that bond payment with a new line so that it can be tracked separately going forward. Apologize, I'm jumping, or my screen's not working for me, but this line is new. And the Council has made, had, had made a commitment of $4 million to the Highway Department for, for, for future expenses. I continued with that same strategy. I put the $3.3 in the debt fund, or excuse me, for the debt payment. But then the additional $700,000 is still sitting in the capital line. But originally, this was over $12 million in the first fiscal plan that I had sent you, but it was doubled. We had the $12 million in '25 and the $12 million in '26. This gives you a better picture of what your budget truly looks like in '26 without that rollover. And my recommendation to Luke was to, each year, at the end of every given year, let the appropriation die in whatever is spent or not spent, that he would come back and reappropriate that in January via additional appropriation. That way, Luke will be able to spend, to spend that money as necessary, but he will only reappropriate the remaining balances of the $12 million or the $15 million in the edit fund that we had been carrying. But this truly gives you a better picture now of what your budget looks like for 2026. And you can see that I still have this line highlighted. This shows that the budget in the, in the general fund is out of balance $896,000. In the big picture, you, you could do nothing, and you could approve the budget as is, and we would still have $45 million left at the end of '26. But there is also a $1 million appropriation still being shown in here in the Council budget for stipends. Amy, please correct me if I say anything wrong there. So that is still being carried in here as well. But go ahead.
Yeah, hang on a minute.
Yeah, I don't think, well, I'm pretty certain the stipends are not in the general fund. They're only in the food and beverage fund.
So in the Council's budget, I have $750,000 for stipends plus FICA and PERF. Then I also advertised an additional $1 million in health insurance under the commissioners for advertising purposes.
Okay, I apologize. It's in the commissioner's budget. So, so if you took the $1 million out of the commissioner's budget, and it's not needed, this budget would be in balance. So Amy, you don't, that, that $1 million in the commissioner's budget in general fund?
No, it's in food and beverage.
Right, but in the general fund, there's a $1 million.
In the Council for advertising.
Yes. So if that, excuse me, thank you. If that $1 million dollars in the Council budget is not needed for stipends or any other purpose, that could be taken out, and this budget would, would be in balance. So I, I guess the question would be to the Council, is, is there a reason to continue to carry that $1 million for, for other purposes? Or if it could be taken out again, it would, it would be in balance by $100,000?
They usually zero it out at second reading.
Okay.
So, so Mike, even with the healthy cash balance, if that's zeroed out at second reading, we, we should be okay.
Yeah, you should be okay. Actually, what would happen is this cash balance will grow by $1 million. It will go, go back up to 46 million. If we take the $1 million out of, of the Council budget that's been carried, this budget will go in balance. This will be a positive number, and this cash balance would go up by $1 million. And that is, that is still carrying the $4 million appropriation for highway fund, the highway fund, and includes the bond payment, the proposed bond payment.
Question, Mike, because I'm, I'm under the impression that Council has already set back $12 million for the highway. Is that $12 million currently in the cash balance?
Actually, what, in my forecast, it's actually out. This $12 million in '25, I am still showing, and that's where it's currently appropriated. So what will happen at the end of this year, if Luke has not spent any of the $12 million, which I don't believe he has, that appropriation would die, and he would come back to you in January and reappropriate it. But it would not be in your forecasting going forward. But, but the 12, the 12 million has been accounted for in highway.
Okay, so it's not sitting in cash right now?
No, if I took that $12 million out, this cash balance would jump $12 million. Or excuse me, if I took the $12 million highway appropriation out, this would jump $12 million.
Okay, and then I just wanted to confirm if I'm following the math. If we take out the $1 million that's advertised in the general fund, that will put the general fund in balance by about $150,000, about $100,000, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then could you share with us your opinion of what is a healthy cash balance?
I would, I, I've always said to my clients, looking at the ensuing year property tax amount, and looking into '27, if that's about $21 million. If you had $10.5 million in a, in a cash balance, that's more than sufficient to get you from January to May-June when you get property tax settlements.
Thank you.
But our cash balance is much healthier than that.
Yeah, you're, you're well beyond that. And so I will tell you that there are some counties and cities and towns that have formal cash balance policies, and most of them focus on a 60-day reserve. And that's not too much different. In other words, if you took your budget and divided it by 12, and consider two months of that, that's what a lot of other units consider an appropriate cash balance.
For some reason, I have in my mind, Mike, that we've had discussions where it was shared that a healthy cash balance would be half of your annual expenses.
That would be a very strong cash balance.
Very strong. Okay, thank you.
There are some units that, that have taken that approach, but that would be very strong to carry a 50% cash balance in relationship to your budget. Now, in your case, your budget is $50 million. Even 50% of that would be 25 million.
25. Okay, thank you.
So you're, you're in a strong cash position.
And right now, with what you just stated, we are going to be in balance in the general fund, correct?
In, in balance in the general fund. Now, there's, there's some other things we need to talk about yet. So I'm not, I'm not done, but if you just pulled that million dollars out right now, we'd be in balance by $100,000. So the next one I want to talk about is food and beverage, because that's another place where we have some dollars tucked in for advertising purposes. That's on page 21. I, I apologize. I don't know if you have the electronic version of this. I sent it to Amy pretty late last night. Or not, but if you're following along, I'm actually on page 21. This budget has a million dollars appropriated in, in it as well for health insurance. But it's my understanding, again, this was for just advertising purposes, in that we actually have all the appropriation for health insurance in the general fund right now. Is that correct, Amy?
Yes.
So with that said, you could, if you took that million dollars out, this budget would be left out of balance $797,000 instead of a million seven, or a million eight. There is also, Amy, and I think you said this already, there is also $750,000 appropriated or currently sitting in the Council budget for, for stipends?
Yes, that plus some FICA and PERF.
Plus FICA and PERF. Okay, so, go ahead.
Would that be, so that's 750, as I'm looking at page 21. Is that number in professional services base pay then? Is that where that 750 would be showing up on page 21?
Yeah, it would be showing up in personnel, under personal purposes. So you can see that the personnel budget has increased quite a bit from '25 to '26. It's because it includes the $750,000 in the Council budget, and, and also the million dollars for health insurance, which I don't believe there's a need for that million dollars at this time. The question is, do you want to leave the $750,000 for stipends in the Council budget?
Where else could we move it?
Well, you could leave it in the general fund.
I don't know, Mike. I, I, I'm thinking we probably should leave it right where it is.
Okay. I mean, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying you should move it. I'm just saying, if, if you don't need, if you need the full 750, then that's where it would stay. But if you don't need it, obviously, that, that would reduce the deficit.
I'm not sure on the numbers on what we're gonna end up at the end.
Okay.
But if you ran the numbers, Amy, on the 750, how close?
No, but with the FICA and PERF, it's 891,375. So you could move it to the general fund. I can create the department, Council Department and the general fund just for that. That's not a problem.
Okay, okay, Mike. Did you hear what she said?
I did. So you have two options here. You could either leave it in here or move it to the general fund, and that's, it's, it ends up being six, one half dozen another, but it just kind of depends on where you want to pay those stipends from.
I guess that's what we pay you for, Mike. We need to know whether you want, where, where you would recommend that it go.
Amy, for clarification, when you, when, when we're saying stipends, are these one-time payments?
Yes.
Okay. In, in my rec, in that case, it doesn't matter. You can leave it right here. This has a strong cash balance as well in that, in the sense, now, this, this actually will be a million eight. Okay, when we, if we cut that million dollars out for health insurance, this is gonna be a million eight. This revenue, food and beverage revenue comes in on a monthly basis. So it's, it's different than property tax. You wouldn't need 50% of that number. So if you left the stipends in here, this cash balance would still be a million eight in comparison to $4.2 million revenue in the ensuing year. That's more than sufficient. But you also have, yeah, I would, if we were still going for the appeal, I'd probably tell you to park it in the general fund. But at this point, we're not trying to tie that appropriation up unless you want to. So I think leaving it in the food and beverage fund is fine.
Does that seem to be popular consensus?
That's for me, yes. Makes, makes sense.
I have a question. Isn't, aren't we trying to get away from general fund and get closer to lit, or am I mistaken? This is John Myers.
Yeah, John. So that lit conversation is going to be more in, in 2027 as we get ready for the '28 budget. That is where we're being driven for future revenue is in local option income tax. But for '26 yet, there's not substantial changes in that. So this is, there's, there's no lit going into the food and beverage fund. This is truly just the food and beverage tax that we're collecting.
So my point being is if there's any opportunity to move funds from general fund to lit, should we take it at this point in time or just leave everything where it is?
I, I think you can leave it in, in this fund at this point. Again, if we were going to proceed with the appeal, and we actually qualified, I would probably be recommending the general fund. But at this point, the cash balance in the general fund, even though it's substantial, isn't going to matter to the state now. There's no, there's no penalty for having more cash in the general fund. Where before, the general fund cash was somewhat working against us because you gotta prove, that you gotta qualify for the appeal. But since we're not qualifying for the appeal, leaving ca, more cash in the general fund is not a problem.
I just have one final question, Mike. How much, would, were we anticipating for that growth appeal for 2026?
Good question. I had mathematically, if we would have mathematically qualified for, from the DLGF, we would have received $1.9 million.
$1.9 million?
Yes, just a little more than that. The old fiscal plan that I sent you in, in the, on the first day, included just a slightly more than $1.9 million appeal. That is, that is out of here now.
Is this the same as the supplemental?
I'm sorry that you broke up.
Is this the same as the lit supplemental that we get?
No.
Yeah, so this is different. Thank you.
This is different, yeah. Now, I have one other place that I'd like to touch on before we move off of this, is actually jail lit on page 18. The reason I want to touch on this is there is some room. Now, Amy did also advertise a million dollars in this budget. I have taken it out because I didn't see that there was a need in that fund for it. So in this case, I've actually taken the million dollars out. And this budget is in balance by $430,000 for 2026. Now, I don't know the answer to this, but I don't know if there are any other expenses left in the general fund that the sheriff could move to this fund. But you could move another $430,000. If, if there's qualifying expenses, and I don't know the answer to that, that would be a question for the sheriff. If there's qualifying expenses that could be moved out of the general fund into this fund, we can move some additional expense here and still be in balance. This fund.
He has one line item left in the general fund for contractual services, but it's $600,000.
Okay, so he can move $400,000 of that. That would eat this surplus up, and it would leave $400,000 more in the general fund.
Maybe he can swap out something so that, that account's not split.
Oh, okay.
Swap out something so this count, account's not split. So here's my question. Assuming they can find something to equal, to come up to that amount, then we are still going to be okay in that fund, correct?
Yeah, correct. You would actually be more than in balance then. So if you moved another, hypothetically, if you moved another $400,000 out of the general fund, you would, you, your budget would be in balance by about a $500,000 in '26.
Okay. Well, considering we're losing the amount that we're losing because we're definitely, and, and it is a definitive that we will not be getting approval for the.
Yeah, so, so we've advertised it in the budget. If for some reason that there is a mathematical error in the DLGF calculation, I'm not, I'm not hopeful of that. If there is some mathematical error, we have advertised it, and you have actually until October 21st to file for a growth appeal. So if something comes up that would change it, then, then we could still have that opportunity, but I am not optimistic at this point.
So I have a question about where would we, where would we have to be to qualify with the present variables that they've given us? What would have to change?
Their number would have to change. They would have to lower their three-year average. I, I was surprised that the state three-year average grew like that. I mean, you're, you're a growing community, and it's hard for me to believe that the state jumped that much, but that is what has been calculated on their end. Like I said, last year on the growth appeal, the number was 1.0872. That was the magic number. You had to be growing 1.02 faster than that number. This year, it increased to 1.0991. And so that knocks us out of the calculation, because our number virtually remained unchanged.
Yeah, and that surprised me too. In the research I did, the GDP has been consistently going up a lot each year, and is forecast to go up even more in '26. So I don't understand.
Yeah, it's just very, it, it just, it, it was surprising to me that I, to be real frank, I just thought it was a no-brainer, and that was my, my fault, is I read the memo, but I didn't look at the math, because I just made automatic assumption that we'd qualify, because our average hadn't changed. But I wasn't expecting the state to jump that much, and so I, I don't have, I don't have any detail behind their calculation. So at some point, we may, and, you know, you gotta add 92 counties up for three years to, to make that calculation, so. But again, I, I'm not saying the state has made an error here. I, that's just what they're reporting, so.
And I'm assuming, as always, you'll stay on top of it?
Yes, I will. I'm, I'm going to ask a few questions about that, yeah. But nevertheless, even without the appeal, your budget looks good. And as I mentioned in my, on the opening day, it was going to be a real challenge for us to qualify for the deal to begin with. The tone of the appeal is much different than prior years, and the information you would be required to provide is much more detailed than prior years. So if there was ever a year I was concerned, I mean, we've, we've obviously gotten very close before of not qualifying. But this year, I think, would have been particularly hard anyway, even if we mathematically qualified.
Okay, Mike, I'm gonna break here for a second and ask the Council if anyone has any questions on what we've covered so far that we haven't already asked. So we'll start down here with Mr. Bates.
No, I'm good with the explanation. Thank you, Mike.
Just one clarification, Mike. The, the fiscal plan that we have in front of us today dated September 10th is, and this might be a question for Amy Thompson as well. Do these numbers include only what we approved at, after first reading?
They include after first reading and some of the discussions I know that were on the revised budgets being presented today.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, and it also. Yeah, and, and it also includes, um, uh, some comments from Luke and how we structure the bond payment going forward. So I, I think it's, I think the way the fiscal plan is presented now, it's much cleaner to see what, what your budget's in or out of balance in twenty six.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mike, I just want to thank you for all your work as as usual, you know, the amount of effort you put into it. We, we certainly depend on your advice a lot. We, we thank you very much, so.
Okay, I, I do have one more thing I'd like to talk to you about.
Hang on a minute, we're gonna see if anyone to my left has any more conversation, then we'll.
Michelle addressed my question, so thank you very much.
My pleasure.
So there was a question on the general obligation bond. Is that the same thing we're talking about for the highway?
That's actually the next thing I wanted to discuss.
Right, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, it's yours.
Okay, so, um, we had programmed, we, we had programmed in, uh, a five million dollar bond issue uh, into the planning process. And with the growth in the assessed valuation of twelve percent, over twelve percent, and now, now not qualifying for the appeal, and this may not be bad news. It's just news you need to be aware of is, um, the, the bond issue now can be paid off all in the first year. Um, because we have so much capacity now. And it actually will cause the tax rate to decline some because, uh, because of the higher AD growth. Let me get to it here. Uh, apologize, let me, uh, let me get to the page number here. It is page sixteen, I believe. Let me go backwards here. No, I'm sorry, it's page fifteen. So, uh, one of the problems is we will have no bond payments, uh, due in twenty seven. At this point, everything we have in terms of geo-bonds and including the new one that you have, uh, will be paid off in twenty six. So, and that's a substantial increase, even from just last year, you could see from almost six million to eight million five. The problem is that I ran into when I moved that forward is with Senate Bill one, uh, there is the new property tax credit loss. And, uh, the debt service fund takes some of that loss. And so the DLGF actually in, um, their review process will not recognize this loss. They will give us enough, uh, levy and payment on paper that will, will fund this. But the problem is going to be is they're going to set a levy ignoring this three ninety-one. They will not acknowledge that. And so, um, it is likely that, that we would end up with a negative cash balance at the end of twenty six. And you can't have a negative balance. And so that would have to be made up from the general fund. Now, we don't know the calculations, what they're going to use next year. But there, there were actually two options I've thrown out. I, we haven't had any further conversation about this. Um, one option, and I don't know if it's a, a real option yet. I haven't had a chance to talk more with Jeff Peters about this. But, uh, one option is possibly selling the bonds with a premium that would generate some extra dollars. Uh, for the bond that be above them beyond the five million, um, that might allow us to cover that loss. That might be an option. Or another option is, uh, to hit pause on the current bond issue of five million dollars and go back through the le- legal proceedings and actually issue more bonds than what the five million dollars calls for. Um, so, so I really, potentially there are three options. One, just take this loss and just know at the end of twenty twenty-six that we will have to move cash from the general fund to cover this, uh, debt, potential deficit. That's one option, just to leave it as is. The other potential option, again, I don't know the legal, uh, I, I, we need to talk to Adam and Jeff about that. It's if we can sell the bonds with premium that would allow us to cover that deficit. Or, or if the council and commissioners wanted to rethink the amount they're asking for a bond and go back through the legal proceedings to increase the bond. Now, before you a- answer that question, I want to show you the tax rate. Uh, right now, I'm anticipating the tax rate. Uh, even with the full bond payment of five million dollars in the, in the debt fund, I'm anticipating the debt or the, the overall tax rate to decline point zero zero five four or a negative one point, uh, eight percent. Now again, if you didn't want that to drop, you wanted it to remain flat, um, one option is to go back through the bond proceedings and ask for a larger bond. And then we'd structure that bond so that rate doesn't e- decrease. But nevertheless, um, with all things considered right now, that's what I'm actually forecasting the rate to decrease slightly in twenty six. If we would have qualified for the appeal, there would not have been a decrease. The tax rate would not have, uh, decreased. And we would not have been paying the full bond payment in twenty twenty-six. We would have stretched that out over twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Mike, when, when do the, the decisions, when would the decision need to be made on that projection?
That, that's a good question. We would need Adam to work backwards. Um, our, our, our bond counsel to work backwards. We would have to have the bond issue um, issued before twelve thirty-one, uh, December thirty-first. I believe there is time to go back through that, but we would need to get Adam to put together a bond cal- calendar and work backwards. Um, to say, okay, this is the date we need to make a decision by if we want to increase the bond beyond, uh, what we've gone through to date.
So is there a ballpark, uh, range of how much it would need to be increased? And then asking Mr. West, uh, if there's, you know, certain projects that they could add to this?
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, I originally, before we started, was thinking about seven million dollars. I would say based on the assessed valuation coming in so strong this year, that's, that's really what's uh, has been a big factor in this, that it grew over twelve percent, even with all the changes in Senate Bill one. That's amazing. Um, so, um, I would say we'd probably get closer to eight million dollars that we would want to issue because we'd pull more bond payment into twenty-five, or two, excuse me, into twenty-six. But we would also want to leave some bond payments outstanding and paid in twenty-seven so that we could have an operating balance to absorb the loss of that Senate Bill one impact, that three hundred and eleven thousand. If you don't, the three hundred and eleven thousand I was showing uh, would essentially be a one-time payment out of the general fund. So if you'd just be using cash balance of the general fund to make that loss up. Not a big deal because your cash balance is very strong. But I wanted to throw those options out to you. So, um, you do have time if, if you want to restructure, um, and keep the tax rate flat.
All righty. Any additional questions regarding bond issue? All right. Have anything else for us?
That's, I apologize, that's a lot for a unexpected meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah, so anyway, uh, I, I think overall, overall, your budget's in good shape. So, um, I, I think you're positioned, uh, for twenty-six. I just, if you want to do some more fine tuning, that, that would be up to the council.
Anything additional for, yeah, Mr. Reuters before being this?
No, thank you for your, uh, expertise. Uh, your conservative leadership has served us well. Thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Have a good day.
You as well. Don't go too far.
Okay, uh, Amy can reach me by phone. I do have some meetings today, but Amy can reach me by phone if she needs me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I wasn't completely as sad as I thought it would be. All right, uh, moving forward, looks like first up on the agenda today is, uh, one oh oh one for the mental health center. And that is located on page fifty in your budget book.
Belt and child, does it look like any?
Uh, no one's here today, second reading? Okay, so I guess our motion would be to, uh, had to accept a motion to, there was no revisions on that budget, Amy. So we prepared to accept a motion to approve as was approved on first reading.
Second?
No, I'm not making a motion.
Move to approve was approved on first read.
So we have, uh, first by Mr. Myers, a second by Mrs. Mr. Myers. I've started off. Back in a thousand seconds, my Mrs. Graves. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
I apologize, my coffee kicked in.
Next up on the agenda is our WIC program. And it is located on page eighty-three in your agenda, or in your budget book. And it looks like there are some, was it, some revisions? And is anyone here from WIC? Okay, Amy, do we need to read those revisions out loud?
No, you were just, so I recalculated the FICA and PERF based on the changes to match the WIS study that was a permit first reading.
Uh.
So your motion would just be as resubmitted on second reading.
Okay, so it appears like I'm ready for a motion for the WIC program as resubmitted on second reading.
Move to approve as resubmitted, Fund eight two two nine.
Have a first by Mr. Myers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dittmer's. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passants. Okay, next up is the extension office. You just have the one fund or, yes, the one fund, correct? Mike, state, state your name for the record, please.
I'm Heather Doherty, County Extension Director.
And that is on page thirty-four. And it looks, appears there were no revisions from first reading?
There was not, no.
Okay, do you have any questions for us?
Uh, I don't think so. I don't, was there gonna be something about part-time rate of pay?
Uh, yes, as a matter of fact, uh, we were going to discuss the part-time rate of pay. And I believe that is located in your budget books under the blue papers. So.
So she has the intern at ten dollars and fifty cents, so that would go to the twelve dollars?
Yes. So we have, we took a vote to raise the basic starting pay for part-time to, from nine dollars, I believe, or that mark to twelve.
Okay.
So on your part-time, you, that rate of pay would be increased to twelve. So that's the revision that you have.
Okay, yes, so that is a change from the first reading.
Right.
Cause I didn't know.
Right, we, so, yeah.
So you, do you need the numbers or, cause I did.
I don't believe so, do you?
Okay.
So does your appropriation need to change based on that?
So the part-time line item is fine. The intern line item does need to change from five one one eight to five eight five zero to have enough money in there to pay.
Compensate the twelve dollars. Did you get the numbers, Amy?
Five eight five zero, yeah.
Okay. That's it on the changes for second reading? All right, so with that, if there's no further discussion, prepare to take the motion as resubmitted on second reading.
Move to approve, uh.
It's actually not resubmitted. It's as approved on first reading with the exception of changing that and then the part-time.
So move.
Part-time rates.
No, I need to figure out what she's saying because I can't hear her up here.
Oh.
So, uh.
The budget was not resubmitted.
Okay, and so it's not approved though as it was on first reading?
It was approved on first, s- approved on first reading with the exception of.
Gotcha.
Increasing the intern line item to five thousand and eight fifty.
Okay, what Amy said. That's the motion.
That's my motion.
Okay.
No, second.
Have a first by Mr. Dittmer's, a second by Mr. Bates. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is soil and water, and it is located on page fifty-one in your budget book. Good morning.
Morning. Kathy Hayes, Soil and Water.
Page fifty-one?
Fifty-one. I don't see any changes, any revisions, so. Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for soil and water? Discussion hearing none, prepare to take a motion as approved on first reading.
Move to approve Fund one oh oh one dash oh one three oh, soil and water as approved on first reading.
Second.
We have a first by Mrs. Graves, a second by Mr. Bates. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, thank you. Next up is the county park. And it's located on page forty-nine.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, yeah, forty-eight, forty-nine. And you are going down through eleven seventy-nine, right?
Correct.
Okay, starting on eleven fifty-seven?
Uh, Kevin Leonard, Park Superintendent. And, and we did not have any revisions from first read.
You do, there are no revisions from first reading?
He does have overtime. He removed that.
Okay.
But he does have overtime.
So if you would.
An eleven seventy-eight.
Right. We've approved the amount. So did you want to talk about the rates today? Since we've approved the rates, but.
There is no changes.
I was gonna say there's absolutely no changes. Okay, so, uh, prepare to take a motion to approve, are all of your, are all of them, Amy, should we take these one at a time and take them all? There's no changes, I'm assuming with the others. So it would be eleven seventy-nine, eleven seventy-eight, and eleven fifty-seven. Someone would like to make a motion?
Move to approve as approved on the first reading. Eleven fifty-seven, eleven seventy-eight, eleven seventy-nine.
Just clarify, eleven fifty-seven oh one two eight.
Clarify, want eleven fifty-seven oh one two eight. And the others too.
We have a first by Mr. Myers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next up is the health department. And, uh, that's on page eighty-two.
On seventy-nine.
Oh, go ahead. I'm following this instead of.
You got that too, you.
No, that's all right. It's seventy-nine. Okay, Betsy.
No changes.
Absolutely no changes whatsoever.
On all four.
All four. So we're looking at eleven fifty-nine, eleven sixty-one, eleven sixty-eight, twelve oh six.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Did any of your part-time, um, rates increase?
No, they did not.
Thank you.
I submitted those to John, so.
Being, or hearing no changes from first reading, I'm prepared to take a motion.
Uh, move to approve as approved on first reading.
Right.
Oh, good, good point, uh, eleven fifty-nine county health, uh, eleven sixty-one local public health services, and eleven sixty-eight local health maintenance.
And tobacco seven, twelve.
And tobacco seven, I'm getting there. Oh, local health, uh, twelve oh six, local health department trust. That is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second.
So I have a first by Mr. Mallers, a second by Mr. Bates, there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is our coroner, but I do want to say, I was gonna say at the beginning of the meeting, uh, we have, um, at one o'clock advertised for our binding units, so if by chance something happens, or we're, we're not done by eleven thirty, we'll recess the second reading, break for lunch, and then recess again at one for binding units, and then when the binding units are finished, then we will go back into the second reading to complete that, so everyone can bear their morning, so. Next up is fund eleven fifty-seven out of food and beverage for our coroner. And that's located on.
Page twenty-four.
Page twenty-four, thank you, Michelle, I just feel like you do that, you can read it, but.
And I'm always gonna ask about part-time.
You go, you go ahead. We didn't really cover that thoroughly in first reading, so it's a good thing to bring it out, so the public is aware of it.
Morning.
State your name.
Derek Wilson, Chief Deputy Coroner.
I've only seen your name on paper, Derek, it's good to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Okay. Would you like to go forward, would you like to, bark?
I have no revisions.
Okay, uh, Amy, were there revisions on the coroner's budget based on first reading, and, and did you ma, all of those have been made?
Yes, there was just one, there was two salary changes, and the communication line items was reduced, but he does have part-time changes.
Oh, there are part-time changes, so you.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about part-time changes, um, if you want to address those, I know it's a short notice, but we're glad you're here today.
Which one is it specifically, can you read that one, account number?
Let Amy show you on the part-time scale what's going on, and then you can look at.
And I think it's more especially supplemental.
It's a twelve-hour shift and call-out to scenes.
Shift differential pay.
One thirty-five to one forty.
We didn't discuss that, no. So, Amy, is it shift differential pay and call-out pay?
The court, yeah.
Going up, what, five dollars?
Each, yeah.
Each.
We, we can keep it the same as last year, we can reduce it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So Amy, this would be, um, as submitted, as, as, I'm sorry, I'll get this, as resubmitted on first reading with changes?
So the actual hourly rates for part-time will be later at the end of the day, so I'll make notes, and we'll make those changes then, so the motion for this budget would be as approved on first reading.
Okay, thank you. Did you guys hear that? All right, so I'm prepared to take a motion.
Move to approve as approved on first reading.
The first by Mr. Mallers.
Oh, and this is, uh, eleven fifty-seven, the one oh seven coroner.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Dittmers, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Hello, Messina.
Hello.
Tell me how far down you're going.
Okay, Sheena Johnson, Court Administrator, I have one thousand one oh one three nine um, through four nine one seven, cost of user fee, user free fund.
Think we're starting on page fifty-two? In your budget book.
I have no changes since first reading, the only thing I have, well, at the end of first reading, you guys talked about part-time rates.
I can't.
At the end of first reading, we talked about part-time rates, so, um, we are removing two of those, I don't know if you want that now, later, John knows and Amy knows.
Okay, I think we'll, we'll do it at the end, so as long as, as the two people are aware of it, we can make those changes then.
Perfect, thank you.
Should, should Sheena come back and present for that?
I wouldn't think so, would you, Amy?
So just to clarify, um, you said no twelve dollars, so I had the range twelve to seventeen for clerical, so are you just doing seventeen?
Fifteen, we have a fifteen, we have a, okay, let me back up, we have a twelve, a fifteen, seventeen, and eighteen, a twenty-one, and a thirty, get rid of the twelve and the thirty.
Easy.
Okay.
And there are no other changes to the fund numbers that you mentioned since first reading?
Correct.
Okay.
Ready for motion?
I am, sir, thank you.
Well, stop me if I go too far. All right, motion. Move to approve as approved on the first reading, correct?
Correct.
One oh oh one oh one three nine. One two zero zero oh one three one, one two zero zero oh one three three, one two zero zero oh one three four. Two five oh one oh one three one, two five oh one oh one three two, two five oh one oh one three three, two five oh one oh one three four, two five oh one oh one three six, two five oh one oh one four five. Two two oh one.
And the twelve thirteen?
Twelve thirteen, that's all.
Twelve thirteen and forty-nine seventeen.
Correct.
You, you go ahead. So we have a first by Mr. Mallers, I'm Mr., Mr. Myers, a second from.
Mr. Bates.
Mr. Bates, you did second, okay, thank you. So any further discussions? I have way too many.
You're doing.
John ends up here. Um, we have a first and a second, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, I appreciate it. Next up is Vazia.
Lauren.
Hi.
Lauren Rainier, San Vazia Director.
You're up for the next two funds, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Um, there are no changes since first reading, and I submitted, um, our job descriptions for both positions to Tiffany, that's the only change.
Okay, so you're following the procedures that were set for?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, um. It's pretty simple, then, prepare to take a motion?
Move to approve as approved on the first reading, four one one and four two oh three.
And?
Four one one one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two of them.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, oh, did you get both of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
So we have first by Mr. Myers, and a second by Mr. Dittmers, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the, uh, juvenile detention center, hi, Christie. How far down are you going?
Good morning, I just have the one, one zero zero one zero one four zero.
Okay, and state your name, please?
Christie Brother, Director of Juvenile Detention.
Okay. And what page, Michelle?
Uh, page fifty-nine. And she does have, I believe, a change in part-time rate?
Yes.
I, I didn't hear any of that, sorry.
Uh, the part-time rate I had is to go up to thirty dollars an hour.
Okay, okay, and, and the amount that you requested covers that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we'll, we'll make that change at the end, right, the others? Okay. Discussion? Hearing none?
Move to approve as approved on the first reading, fund one zero zero one zero one four zero.
Have a first by Mr. Myers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes.
Thank you.
Unified probation. So you have like, what, the next twenty-three?
Uh, Angela Morris, Director of Court Services and Chief Probation Officer, we have fourteen funds, they start with one zero zero one, one three eight through one one two two.
Okay, and the first one, Michelle, is what page?
Um, sixty-one.
Okay, so what's the best way, Amy, should we approach this one fund at a time, and then take a, a vote?
Is there any changes or discussion?
That's, that's what I'm gonna go from here, if there isn't, we can do them together, okay? So, um, are there any additional changes since the changes have been made at first reading, since first reading presentation?
This is for all the funds?
We were, we're addressing the title changes through the process.
To something.
Right, correct, yeah.
So no title changes, we are not approving, but we did approve the title changes at first reading?
No.
Uh, no, I think it was discussed, and sorry for the confusion on that, but we do have a process in place to get that completed.
Yeah.
And then while you're here in front of us, so you don't have to come back, did you have any changes in your part-time hourly rates, any changes specialty pay?
I wasn't aware of.
Okay.
That discussion.
You requested, um, went from like.
What fund, do you know?
Uh, eleven twenty-two. Uh, it was fifteen to twenty-five dollars, now it's fifteen twenty-six eighteen, and then twelve thirty-three, you added part-time, so that's in your request.
Yes, you did.
Say, say your name for the record.
Steve Promote, Assistant Director.
And what, this is just probation, not community corrections, correct?
These are both community corrections, that, the part-time.
Can, can you state the funds?
Twelve thirty-three.
Uh-huh.
Um, zero one five nine.
Okay.
And eleven twenty-two, zero two zero nine.
Okay, and you've budgeted the amount to cover that increase?
Correct.
Correct, and can you tell us what the in, the difference is, I didn't quite hear, Amy, so we can have it for the record?
Uh, there was not a timeline item in twenty-five and the twelve thirty-three, so we added that into the, into the twelve thirty-three. And that's from twenty dollars to twenty-six one eighty, the range, and then increased the eleven twenty-two from twenty-five dollars as the max to twenty-six one eighty as well. Thank you, Amy.
And we'll make those official changes again at the end.
Um, question, community corrections juvenile?
That's not.
That's not yours, thank you.
See, okay. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is gonna, this is gonna be a big one, it starts at one oh oh one, one oh one three eight, and goes through eleven twenty-two, and it would be, um, as approved on first reading, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um. Okay, I'll give it a shot. I'm going to move to approve as approved on first reading, fund one oh oh one oh one three eight, fund eight two two five, fund nine one seven six, fund nine one seven seven, fund nine one seven eight, fund nine one seven nine, fund nine one eight eight, fund two oh oh one, fund two one oh one, fund two five oh two, fund one oh oh one dash oh one five nine, fund twelve thirty-three dash oh one five nine, fund nine one five two, and fund eleven twenty-two as approved on first reading.
Second. Good job. We have a, a first by Mrs. Graves, a second by Mr. Bates, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Before you walk away from this meeting, thank you for your patience and understanding and meeting with this full council, the numerous times that we had to meet to get, get to this point, so I do appreciate that, thank you.
Anytime, it's our pleasure.
Okay, next up on the agenda is community corrections juvenile.
Page eighty-four.
Good morning, Lauren Byers, Juvenile Director.
Hi, Lori, how are you?
And Lori, it looks like you have two funds?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think the only change we want to make, we had discussion and change account, one six nine zero zero shift differential to one six nine oh two stipend on call.
Amy, can you repeat this, the stipend account number again?
One six nine oh two.
Oh, two, got it.
Now, this was done.
We discussed if we didn't change it first reading, but we've had discussions since, so make the change now.
Okay, so it's, it's not, it's been resubmitted then, right?
No, so the motion would be as approved on first reading.
With that change.
Change.
Okay.
We, we were, but keeping, we were unclear what that account number would be.
Mm-hmm.
With that change, so we did not make the change yet.
Okay. Any other changes, Lori?
No.
Anything?
So while you're here, so you don't have to come back, do we have any questions, it looks like, um, your part-time rate for, uh, fund one oh oh one juvenile and fund forty-nine fifty juvenile project income, both those overtime rates went up six dollars, correct?
That's correct, and that was keeping with the WIS recommendation.
Perfect, and then I think there was one other, which I tried to give to Angela and Steve, and they said, no, it was yours, uh, fund one oh oh one two one three, community corrections juvenile, you did not have this stipend in twenty twenty-five, it's a new, um, shift differential pay that you're asking for, um, an on-call stipend of seventy-five dollars bi-weekly, and again, this is a new, um, item for the budget, did you want to address that while you're here, so you don't have to come back?
Sure, um, that was what we just, um, did the account number, um, for, uh, and that, and that is just, uh, a part-time or a rate for the on-call field officers for the work that they do of an evening that's incremental enough, that's difficult to go in the right stuff and punch in and punch out.
Okay, so that's the reason for the change, they're already getting paid for it, this is just a more efficient way to track it.
Correct.
Thank you.
And there was a debate between the, the, the language on that and which account it would come out of, but I, we've spent many, uh, hours debating this, and it, this is, this is where we've landed, so.
Okay, well, thanks for the explanation, I didn't know.
Thank you.
Yep, any further discussion? Okay, so Amy, we need to take, uh, the motion needs to be as approved on first reading with the changes, correct?
With the change in the account number.
Okay.
One six nine zero zero two, one six nine oh two.
I, I can barely hear you, so I don't know if anybody else up got the number up there or not.
Six five oh two.
You got it? Okay, well, then you go for it.
All right. Um, move to approve as approved on first reading with, uh, this is, uh, ten oh one, two thirteen, community corrections juvenile, move to approve as approved on first reading with the change, um, changing the account number for shift, well, changing the name from shift differential pay to stipend on call.
It's an account number change too.
I know, but I was starting with the name. Is that right? Does that name change, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the account number from one six, is it nine oh oh to one six nine oh two? That it, all right, and then forty-nine fifty, just moving to approve as submitted. No changes.
As approved on first reading.
As approved on first reading.
Okay, we have a very good first.
Ish.
I'd have to second that.
Second by Mr. Dittmers. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
All right.
Thank you all. Next up is our prosecuting attorney.
Pages twenty-five and twenty-six in your budget book.
Good morning, Son.
Good morning. Sorry.
Twenty-five and twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
We have resubmitted our budgets.
Can you move a little closer, sir? I'm sorry.
I'm just messed. We resubmitted our budgets pursuant to the first reading, so it should look a lot like what you were, what we did the first time.
Okay. So Amy, the motion needs to be, needs to be when I'm ready for it, needs to be per
As resubmitted on first reading, except we need to get the salary for the investigator.
Oh, that's right, um. Will you help me explain the situation with WIS on the salary for the investigator? I'm not sure on the question I need to ask as far as are they doing that job? Right. Or has it need to be moved somewhere? So when they're done, we'll
There is a prosecutor investigator that's listed in the merit classification, and that was questioned by, as if it should be a merit deputy. Uh, cause that's where it's the only non sheriff position, and we were told that was incorrect, so we weren't sure if that, if you all had any way in, because I'm assuming that had to do with their job description and if they were a merit deputy.
Not a merit, they're not, but in fact a merit deputy, but should be in that same category.
Okay.
So do we need to?
Well, if, if that's correct, then we don't.
Then we don't need to make any changes.
But Amy, are you okay with that? Cause we kind of questioned that.
I think it had an established salary, did it?
Yeah.
I love it.
No, it does, it does. It's in the classification.
I had left it blank on the resubmission, cause I didn't know, so we need to plug a number in.
Do you have the number that was, that, that should have been?
I'm not hundred percent sure what that number should be.
I think it's seventy-four, or seventy-four oh two five.
So that was the twenty-five salary?
Yes.
Seventy-five, seven, three, nine?
That's not what Michelle just read?
No, she read the twenty-five adopted budget.
Um, that seventy-five number had, um, an, a COLA increase when it was submitted.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So it would be the
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, so it would, um, I believe be seventy-four oh two five.
That's right.
But let's double check, so that's on merit pay, correct?
Yes. Um, the one I have, looks like it says seventy-four seventy-three nine. But I don't know if they're, that was the
Let's look, merit pay. We should have an investigator on here. I just see merit deputies, oh, there it is. Investigator, child support? Is that the right person? No?
Yeah, prosecutor, child support, investigator.
This is a, this is one oh eight, the investigator child support's already there.
Okay, so it looks like the on the merit, well, we went close to midpoint. Yeah, it, I don't understand, it says three hundred and eight dollars and seventy, oh, that's the increase.
So it's seventy-five oh forty-eight?
Seventy-five oh forty-eight. Right.
And it was there, Lance, we're just trying, we didn't get the number in, so we want to make sure that that, we agree on that number. So the motion would be, I'm not quite prepared yet for a motion, but hang on to that thought, so. Lance, do you have anything else for us that?
I don't think so.
Okay. I, uh, there's a visual aid that we prepared to assist us with the prosecutor's office, just because we think there's some really good news out there that we'd like the public to, to know, and, and, and you will support, I believe, and just really proud of this fact, especially after, you know, we've seen some stuff in the newspaper, but I wanted to say that per WIS, uh, once this, um, council adopts the external midpoint salary for starting deputy prosecutors in Johnson County at ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. The starting prosecutor, the, the non-felony, major felony prosecutors, uh, at Johnson County will be the highest paid in the state of Indiana. Hamilton County is the next closest and starts their prosecutors at eighty-nine two thirty-four. And Marion County at seventy-six five, according to the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council. And just to piggyback on some of the things that, that recently been coming from your department, we just wanted to say congratulations and we're happy to, happy to do what we get to do to help you do your job.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Make sure the taxpayers had that information.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So now, Amy, we're ready for a motion?
Um, first of all, he does have a requested increase, um, in his part-time.
Okay, and it goes from
Up to twenty-five dollars an hour from twenty.
From twenty to twenty-five, you've come full.
Yes, do you want me to explain that, or are you?
You're to explain that, we want to bring it out now, so you don't have to come back
Okay.
when we address this, but yes, sir.
The reason why we wanted to increase that is because we use the part-time position lots of times to bring on somebody new. Um, and to attract somebody over that's eventually going to become full-time. It's hard to do that if they're, you know, if it's a really low thing, so we're trying to make it more consi- sorry, we're trying to make it more consistent with full-time people. That's all that is, that's all that is.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared for a motion, and this is for twenty-five oh eight and twenty-five oh nine, correct?
So if someone wanted to make a motion, it would sound like this. One zero zero one, zero one zero eight. Move to approve as resubmitted on second reading, um, with the change of one one eight one zero, investigator two with an amount of seventy-five thousand oh forty-eight. Also approving one zero zero one, oh one one eight as resubmitted on second reading. And approving twenty-five oh eight and twenty-five oh nine as approved on first reading.
That was a test and you passed, thank you. So per the statement Amy just made, uh, I'm prepared to take a motion.
Would that be a move to approve as resubmitted on the second reading? I'm sorry.
I would just say, move to approve as Amy just submitted. That way we've got
How about if I just second her motion?
She's trying to help us out here.
Move to approve as our Amy has just
As our secretary just stated.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Myers and a second by Mr. Dittmers. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of the long day.
Yeah.
Morning.
Good morning, Wayne Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff, with me is Chief Deputy Andy Barnhart. Um, I think I need to say a couple of things. I think a lot of times, uh, the way we present certain things, people may think a little bit different. We're just passionate about our department. Um, a lot of agencies in this county just have a few years of service for their members. I think our average is about fourteen years, uh, of guys that are, and gals that are merit deputies on our agency. I see agencies doing one and two processes a year. Folks don't leave the sheriff's office, uh, but we want to keep that, uh, ability going. We don't want to keep, uh, we don't want bad apples on our agency. We want the best and the cream of the crop. And I think we got one, one hell of an agency and I'm proud of them, um. And we're going to continue to do the work we're doing and no, we appreciate everything you guys have done last year. You guys were great to us and we ask for people outside of the, the budget hearings. And, uh, you, you help us get over hurdles, but, uh, I think we're the best in the state. I listen to ninety-one other sheriffs every quarter, uh, of the year. And, you know, I hear their stories and it's, it's a battle to find good people, but we'll get started on our budget and go from there. Thank you.
You're starting with one oh oh one oh five, the general fund sheriff, and are you going through to, is it one one seven five? Excuse me, one one seven five? No, you're not county misdemeanor, you're extradition.
Yes, we are.
You are, so it goes to one one seven five, correct?
Yeah, correct.
And that starts on page ten in your budget book, but we do have revised, um, budget sheets for those.
On some of them.
On some of them. On page ten, page eleven, page twelve, page fifteen, page, yeah, some of them.
So what's the best way to handle this, Amy?
I would do the sheriff then the jail, and then all the other ones together.
Okay. So the sheriff, we're looking at one oh oh one, one oh five. And that is on page
Ten.
Ten. And that budget has been revised, correct?
And resubmitted.
And it's resubmitted. On that particular budget, has there been any other changes since it's been resubmitted for consideration?
Since it's been resubmitted, no. Uh, I'm Andy Barnhart, Chief Deputy, by the way, for the record.
So on one oh oh one, one oh five, for the general fund, the sheriff?
I'm sorry, let me, let me, I need to interrupt you, I'm sorry. They did it with Mr. Reuters' discussion at the beginning, uh, they talked about moving some things out of the one oh five into, uh, lit, and so, uh, I have done some quick calculations. The one oh five, to move it out of the one oh five general fund and into lit. That was what Mr. Reuters was talking about. Yeah, so we, I'm sorry. Could be either one, but the one-two-four has almost, almost everything already moved out, uh, into the lit, there, except for salaries.
Right, that's what I was asking if you could swap something unless there are mountains in the jail.
We can, that's what I'm getting ready to talk about.
But we're in the one oh fives.
Yes, things for the one oh five that are related to the operation of the, if I could get through it, I can, yeah, I could. There are some quick calculations I did, if you want to consider it for the, to move out of the one oh five, and then we can talk about if you'd rather do it on the one-two-four. Uh, those things are office supplies, wear apparel, reserve-wearing apparel, professional services, printing, travel and training, postage, professional liability and casualty, which is through the drones, uh, equipment repair and maintenance, maintenance contracts and office equipment. And the quick calculation I did is that would be three hundred and seventy-one thousand five thirty, if you chose to do those. If not, we could talk about the one-two-four. Uh, but I don't know if you want to look at the options there first before you decide on those.
So I have a question about that, Andy, it's, uh, and Sheriff, nice to see you. Are those related to the lit? Uh, you're, you're moving it from, from this to the lit, right?
That
Just
That's an option, yes.
As discussed.
Yes, sir.
So my concern is, are all those related to the correctional facility?
Yeah, most of it, yes, and this is a discussion we've had before, uh, and, uh, when Adam Gabberry was the county attorney, he said it's open to interpretation, there's never been any particular guidance. The sheriff's office, we have four different constitutional things that we have to do, uh, many of these things I listed are related to the building itself, and that it's never been asked to subdivide and, and separate those out, but to make sure that there's no muddy waters there. We've never asked to put anything like the merit deputies, which are patrol and detectives, things like that, that you could say really don't have anything to do with the jail. We never asked to move them into lit or anything like that. Um, just so the wa- the waters aren't muddied, uh, these are all things related to the operation of the sheriff's office itself.
Yeah, and then, and here's what I'm always in, in support of, and have been before Senate Bill One, is to shift our monies away from the general fund, which are property tax, mainly property tax fit. And then it, it goes to a use tax, like a lit, like the correctional facility. So in effect, what we're doing is we're helping the taxpayers that are, that are paying property taxes. And that has always been my goal, is to get as much, you know, within reason, you know, we don't want to overload the fund, because at some point in time, we're going to have to look at, you know, doing something different than just the, the jail lit. But I, I am always in favor of, uh, and that's the reasoning behind why I'm in favor of that, is because it gives the the taxpayer who is paying property taxes some relief.
Any further discussion on this particular fund? Amy, is this a decision that needs to be made at this moment, or is this to be taken under consideration and do it at the end? At the end?
So my suggestion for bookkeeping would be, so if you move extended from the one oh five, so that's creating another department within the lit fund.
Mm-hmm.
So you got that, and there's several accounts. So what I was looking at is if we've moved in the one-two fours, the six hundred thousand from the general fund back to the lit. And then you just need to move like a hundred and seventy thousand, one sixty-nine, three thirty-one, back to the general.
So am I hearing you saying for bookkeeping purposes and tracking purposes, that you, you think that would be the best way?
I think there's lot, less, um, changes that need to be made.
And is this something that the discussion can, can, you can carry on after this meeting, and then we can do it at final reading, once you get with Andy and Sheriff and
Yes.
Doesn't matter. Sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
I didn't, I just thought, I, I only brought it up because I thought that they didn't want to split the fund, but I understand what you're saying now, that makes perfect sense.
I was just saying not to split the account, because Mike said you can move part of the contractual to the lit and leave the balance.
Right, and you were saying that, yes, I understand.
But the account's not.
Okay. I understand, thank you.
So this sounds like you're perfectly in agreeance with that, so I think that, that's a good thing, so if you and Amy can work that out before adopt, final adoption, then that will, will help all the way around, according to Mr. Reuters.
So we did have some changes here, we should point out, with the, um, payroll specialist and the bookkeeper.
Yes, ma'am.
And are they both in the one oh oh one fund?
They are not both in
No, just one, so
They're both in one oh, they're not both in the one oh five.
The one oh five, thank you, so, um, we should point that out, because I don't know if the entire council was aware of that conversation.
Is, are, are they, where are they to, happening, are they both?
Yeah, let me, um, and these numbers are so little, I apologize to everyone, my eyes are old. Um, on pa- revised page ten, fund one oh oh one, and the account number is one one three nine eight. And that is a sheriff's clerk. And we are renaming that to payroll specialist, and that was an error on the part of WIS that was found at the twelfth hour. We were able to confirm that that needs to be changed. What I don't have in front of me is the budget number, and you have fifty-two four ninety. Do we know, have you been able to confirm that, Amy?
That is correct.
That is the correct. Okay, so I know that is worthy of noting for everyone up here. Um, there was one other thing. Oh, we need to, um, address the elephant in the room, is the merit rank pay, that's on revised page twelve. And that is the request that was in there at first reading, but wasn't adopted, and so you're bringing it back for second reading. And so you're bringing it back for second reading, the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for merit matrix pay. Is that correct?
I believe it was adopted, but.
I didn't have that that was changed.
No, it wasn't, wasn't taken out.
No.
You didn't know, I'm sorry, what?
Nothing.
Okay. It was, just for the record, though, it was, it did not get taken out or it was still in the approved at first reading. Yeah.
It was approved at first reading.
Subject to, we had discussion, we were going to re-cipulate and get some guidelines.
On that note, WIS did send me an email and I'll just hand those out to you real quick.
We all have a copy of them, I believe. It was in response to what you sent WIS. Is that what it was?
No, they, I don't believe you have a copy. You might. I don't know. I've got the papers right here on the side of everything.
Let me grab it. She did.
He did?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And then I have the reference. You referenced salary ordinance from those counties. I gave a copy to Tiffany. There's been too much to print for everybody, so. That's all.
Was there items in here that you want to discuss? I did contact WIS and spoke to Addie personally and ask her if her responses in red were sufficient and adequate for a public meeting since this email did not come through the contracted services from this board before we ever repeated anything. And she said that her answers were intended to be used in a public meeting if it were necessary. So
Good, thank you.
Just wanted to disclose that, that this was something you guys did. We didn't propose.
Yes, ma'am. And I asked her that before. I told her I was going to provide that information to you. So there was nothing that she didn't know.
Was that outside of the approved procedure that we adopted Monday night?
No, ma'am. In the motion that was made by Mr. Mallor, or I'm sorry, by Mr. Dittmers and seconded by Mr. Mallers, it specifically said the pay matrix as well. I've got them. So I did exactly what was, what was asked of me. I sent it to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So did you want to address, you handed it out. Do you want to discuss it? You want to address?
No, ma'am. I think it's been discussed, honey. I just want to make sure that all the information's in front of you. The motion was to give, to send the information to WIS. We got the reply. I'm just.
Got it. Thank you. Discussion. And I refuse to, we use the word contentious. I hate, I will not do that. But there have been a lot of meetings. Sheriff made a statement at the beginning. I completely agree with, as I know we all do here. But I do want to open the floor for specific discussion at this time for you for a vote to make sure everyone is in thorough understanding of what has gone on. There's been lots of emails, lots of meetings. So if you have any additional information or any additional discussion, now would be the time, please.
I can tell you, I had a conversation with.
Can you move?
You're consistent.
I know.
I'm not request. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. I had a conversation with Sheriff and with Andy and I think where some of the confusion might have been is we submitted, Andy submitted and Sheriff submitted the metrics for consideration, for review. For us to have more information is what I thought this was, not necessarily consideration for adoption this year. We're on a journey here with a baseline on a process we've never had before as far as consistency and salary consideration. Just a discipline around how we do business, if you will. And so I think this is an important step toward that objective, but I don't think that it was, my thought was not that it was going to be an add-on if WIS could get to it for this year's consideration. And my discussion with these two gentlemen, it was, I think the perception might have been a little different than that. So we have a little gap in the understanding is all. So I think we're making headway. I think you can expect incremental improvement going forward. But we now have a foundation on which to build and I think that's what we're looking for. So that's my, my comment and a follow-up to our conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Bates, do you have anything?
I think he said it very eloquently.
John and I have talked about this quite a bit and that was our understanding. John and I have talked about this quite a bit and that was my understanding as well.
So I'm confused. I haven't been part of a lot of these discussions. And so what we've got here, you know, with, I think WIS's statement. And my understanding, John, was I thought we were trying to get this into this year and maybe I'm, I've misunderstood the process. The reason that I would want it to be in this year is because, and I don't, I don't even know what the change is at this point in time, honestly. It's awfully convoluted. Are you, if we go ahead here and say move to approve as approved on the first reading with what's in front of us in the budget, is that what you're wanting?
Yes, sir. That's what I'm wanting. I, again, I, I understand there was confusion and I, after speaking to the individual council members that were willing to speak to me this week, I understand there was some confusion. I went to be accurate and rewatched again. And Mrs. Burton said, I said, I asked if the thing we need to hurry on is the pay matrix. There was three items we, I was told directly by name to send to WIS. Two of those three items were sent and addressed. And then I found out on Monday that the pay matrix was not sent. And I said, well, I'm confused. I thought I included that with my email to be sent to WIS and it didn't get to them. The motion, or I'm sorry, that when asking for a motion, Mrs. Burton said, I said, the thing we need to hurry then on is the pay matrix. And Mrs. Burton said, right, it should be cut and dry. I don't think they'll hopefully have any problems actually. And then Mrs. Costley said we could amend the budget even after the final adoption. Mrs. Graves said, yes, the goal is to get it all right the first time. And Mrs. Burton then said, assuming everyone is in agreeance with what I just suggested, I'm open for a motion for a first. And then Mr. Dittlers made that motion, Mr. Mallers seconded it. It was seven to zero. That included, if you rewatch it, that's all I'm going to say about it. That included the, the pay matrix. How it got convoluted, I can't answer that. I don't know. I did what I was asked. And if you rewatch it, I did what I was asked. I have always presented facts and done what I was asked by the council. And I want to reiterate what the sheriff said. We have no intention to do anything other than what the council's will is today. That's, that's the way the government works. We're presenting you the information that we were asked to and what the council does with it is up to the council.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions for, or any other statements?
Yes, I have a statement to make.
Okay.
And is, we're here to hear, sorry, it's not the same voice. What other changes you might have going forward in the future. We're here every month to hear those. And I think that opportunity exists. And I think that's what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's what our president's saying. Is that correct? Is that correct?
I don't understand your question.
Well, then I won't restate it.
Okay.
Let's go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
I do think there was some misunderstanding at first reading, I know on my part, and I'm going to assume on the president's part as well. We both were under the impression that our review process had already been approved and adopted. And it had not. It wasn't approved and adopted until Monday night. So I think that is the reason why there were some misstatements made and misunderstandings. We thought the process was already in place and it wasn't until Monday evening. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Do you want me to go over the things that we lowered or no?
Hang on just a second, please. I need to check with the secretary. Well, what do we need to go over as far as changes for this reading as opposed it would be the bookkeeper and the payroll specialist, correct?
Well, those were corrections errors from WIS. The other salary changes matched, were changed to match the WIS study.
Okay, so in this motion, how would the motion need to be read?
If you're willing, I mean, they resubmitted it.
But it was resubmitted with the pay matrix, correct? Okay, so other than the pay matrix, is everything that was resubmitted is accurate? And nothing needs to be mentioned in a public meeting again for the record?
Correct.
Okay, so the motion would need to read approved as, when we get to that point, approved as submitted. And then with any changes that we would make, and that would be the only motion that would need to be made for this particular one, correct?
As resubmitted on second reading with the following changes.
Okay, all right. But before we go on, like I had done with the prosecutor and those that became very, very involved, this budget seizing, we also have a visual aid for the public and for everyone here. So Michelle, if you would go through page one and page two, which is basically straight from, I believe, the budget book, then then I'll get to the good news at the end.
Okay, so we wanted to address the fiscal responsibility that this council takes very seriously and works hard to achieve on behalf of our taxpayers. So what you're looking at here is a screenshot of the fiscal plan presented by Mike Reuters for the general fund. And what is of note, if a council intends to balance a budget, that is done by comparing expenses with revenue. So to balance a budget, you don't necessarily look at the cash balance that is left in that fund at the end of the year. You'll want to look at what is highlighted on the screen. Now, I will say after this slide was created, we had a new budget come in late last night, which Mike Reuters addressed today. But what you will still notice is the pressure that is on the general fund. So what we need to consider here is that some money is being moved out of general fund so that we can balance. The sheriff is willing to do that. But as we look forward as a fiscally responsible council, we want to look at the projected years of twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And look at the deficits that we start to see as SB one comes into effect. And this fiscal plan does take into consideration the three hundred and thirty dollar, three hundred and thirty thousand dollar request for this longevity pay that is in the one oh oh, one requests budget being submitted here today. So as you can see, there is, is a lot of pressure on this fund. If we could look at the next screenshot or slide, I mean, this is a screenshot of our lit fund. The, I forgot to mention, the revenue that, that funds the general fund is property tax dollars. This is our lit fund and the money that generates the revenue in this fund comes from your local income tax, comes out of your paychecks every week. And again, to balance the budget, you would look at expenses versus revenue. And we have good news. These numbers did not change from what Mike presented this morning. We have good news for twenty-six. We will be in budget. We will have a balanced budget for twenty twenty-six if we approve. But then if you look at the projected years of twenty-seven and twenty-eight, again, you start to see a lot of pressure in this fund and then we will not be in balance. So we've, I felt, we felt that this was important to put up on the screen for council to look at, for the public to look at and everyone to realize all the numbers that we are working with as we try to balance these budgets. And then I think you had one more slide.
So actually trying to end on a good note. We, the good news is that the salary request approved by council this year for the sheriff's office, we were able to do five new temporary hire merit deputies at two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Four new permanent hires for correctional officers at two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred dollars. Fifty-five permanent merit pay increases via the WIS salary study for three hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And the total cost of salary increases for the sheriff's office was seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Also, we need to include FICA, PERF and health insurance there as well. The, the longevity, again, I will say, as everyone else has, this has been, and everything Andy said about the prior meeting, of course, and some of my statements was accurate. Some of those were misstatements on my part. I think part of that came from really wanting to do this for the sheriff's department. However, my vote will be no because I hope they stick to their guns next year and we move forward with the longevity program for the entire county, eliminating some of the ones possibly that are on file now and moving forward as something that's fair and equal for everyone, not just one department. The importance of our, our safety programs has been stated before are number one, I believe, by everybody in this county, not just, not just this council here. I do want to point out, and I don't have my memo in front of me, but longevity was not part of our contract with WIS. I, in last meeting, assumed that if we got information to them based on our contract for the services that they provide, this would be something they could reorganize and do. That was not the case. It's very involved, I guess, and, and it's, it's, it's a project and a job within its own. This council wants to keep in mind if longevity is something that we want this outside objective company to assist us with next year in order not to be coming in at the midnight hour, we probably need to make a decision by November in order to incorporate them with what we have now and moving on to step two, which would be longevity for the county and pay parameters, I believe.
Salary ranges.
Salary ranges, yes. So again, in attempting to end this on a positive note, I wanted to present that information for the public as well as everyone here. So with that being said, I believe there's one more slide on the back that I'm going to ask Michelle if she will, oh, nope, nope. That's it. Okay, well, that's everything that I have to say prior to taking a motion. I will get back to you two if there is anything else that you would like to present.
No, just actually one quick personal note. And I told you I would say this in a public meeting because I really do feel it. And the sheriff and I, despite asking for things and fighting for our people and we, as we have done and will continue to do, I wanted to state publicly that we are very appreciative of what the council has done for us in the past, including this year. I want to make sure that just because we ask for what we feel is adequate and wasn't addressed by the WIS study, doesn't mean that we don't appreciate everything else that was done. And I personally also very much appreciate the, because we have been part of this every year and I was part of personnel committee and things like that, that we very much appreciate the change in the process. And I am your biggest supporter of the process going forward. I think that it's a wonderful thing to have a very clear set of guidelines on how to proceed when we want these things addressed for the first time. And as long as we've been doing this, and that is a very good thing. So I want to make sure and say that publicly as well. That's just a personal note. Despite, like the sheriff said, my passion and our enthusiasm and trying to fight for what we feel is right for our people. Yeah, I am factual based and these are facts that this is a, this is a good thing going forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I am prepared to take a motion for one oh oh, one, one oh five, if anybody remembers what Amy said.
Well, I just want to point out too, they have some special teams and shift, but there was no changes.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything. That'll be done this evening. Okay? Alright. Somebody has to step up.
I'll make a motion um to approve one oh oh one dash oh one oh five sheriff.
It should be as presented on first reading with exception.
As approved, as resubmitted on second reading with the following changes. Line item one oh oh one, one one three nine eight, the sheriff's clerk. The budget amount would be five two, four nine zero.
That's going to change.
That was revised, so that stays the same.
Right.
So then I would move to approve as resubmitted on second reading with the following changes, fund one oh oh one, one seven, three hundred merit matrix pay be reduced to zero.
Second.
Remember first by Mrs. Graves, the second by Mr. Bates, further discussion?
I fully appreciate everything that the sheriff's office does. But my role as council as um the financial body of this county, when I look at our budget numbers, we've got problems. And if we can find reductions in expenses, I am happy to revisit this. But also it is the, has always been the intent of, not always, it has been the intent of some council members to address longevity next year for the entire county.
Further discussion?
Will you be moving forward to be changing the funds uh from general to lit?
I think we're going to address that in the next one.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Moving on to one oh oh one, jail, means on what page?
Fourteenth.
Fourteen?
Yeah, do we have a revised sheet on that?
Oh, yeah, revised page fifteen.
Yeah, revised page fifteen.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Actually, no, it's.
That was resubmitted, right?
Not in the general fund, yeah, the general fund, yeah, or just the one line item.
Oh, okay, so there's no, that's as presented on first reading?
Oh.
Um, we can.
That'd be the change, right?
Well, we can do it, you know what, you're going to swap it out.
I am too.
I know, I'm good. I thought that was the one, is that the maintenance contracts? I actually didn't have a copy.
Yes.
Okay, so that was the one that you said you were going to split, or we're not split, but we would.
Unless you want to split.
I can't, we can, whatever makes it easiest for, it really doesn't matter. It doesn't matter to us, uh it's all, it's all sheriff's office related, whatever makes it easiest to uh, if that's the one you want to split up, we can, and we can move. We could move, we can actually.
I was looking at, there's nothing really, we can just split the account.
Okay.
So on the one zero zero one, oh one two four, on page fourteen, original.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to reduce that.
Give me your microphone, Amy, we can barely hear you.
This needs to be reduced to one sixty-nine, three thirty-one.
And that was one oh oh one, one two four?
Yes, there's one line item, contractual services.
It was six hundred thousand, correct?
Yes, one sixty-nine, three thirty-one.
Okay. So this one will be as submitted on first reading with the following changes?
As approved on first reading.
Okay, as approved on first reading with the following changes, okay. Let's take that one next, because it's ready.
Move, we go ahead or?
Please.
Move to approve one oh oh one, oh one two four as approved on the first reading with the following change. One oh oh one, account number three six one oh two, reduce from six hundred thousand to one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-one. Correct?
Correct. We have a first by Mr. Myers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Okay, so how far down can we go with no changes?
You can take eleven fifty-six, eleven ninety-two, one oh oh one, oh one five five, eleven fifty-five, and eleven seventy-five.
So everything except twelve thirty-three?
Yes.
Okay. And there, those as approved on first reading?
Correct.
Sorry, there would be one change to the, the, one ten thousand dollar, it's uh seventeen thousand, three hundred in the twelve thirty-three, that's the ten thousand dollars for.
Okay, we're not going to do twelve thirty-three yet, Andy, we're going to do all the others.
Alright.
That's okay, that's alright. At best, it's confusing, so I've got it in front of me, does anybody, are, are you got the green sheet? It's, it's, it's all the way down.
You follow me on the green sheet?
Go ahead.
You want me to try?
And these have no changes.
Right.
And have not been resubmitted.
As approved on first reading.
I will make a motion to approve, as approved on first reading, fund eleven fifty-six sheriff firearms training, eleven ninety-two sheriff sex offender fees. Then we'll jump to fund one oh oh one dash oh one five five sheriff slash CIT, one one five five extradition and sheriff's assistant, one one seven five county misdemeanor.
Okay, remember first by Mrs. Graves.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dittner's, further discussion?
Just wanted to point out that misdemeanor had part-time, but there's no change.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Now, we will move back to twelve thirty-three, the lit correctional rehab facility jail fund. But Andy, you can go ahead with what yours, you want.
I just wonder, I thought it was as submitted, so as submitted for second reading minus the ten thousand for the pay matrix that was in that account.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's for the major ones.
Okay, so.
Bookkeeper.
And the, and the, but that was as, that was as submitted.
Just want to make sure we got it in there.
So there's no, you got that for the motion, I'm prepared to take a motion for twelve thirty-three?
I'll try.
I'll follow.
Three for three, maybe. Um.
Do we need to add the four hundred then?
Ooh.
Oh.
Since we took it out of the.
Good job, that was a good catch, we would have had to come back for that.
Four thirty-six, six nine. Who's it back up with the six hundred?
I believe so.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Where's that go?
So that amount would be that, thirty-six, sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Four thirty-six, sixty-nine.
What page is that on? And, or?
What line item?
What line?
Twelve thirty. You were adding the line item?
Yeah, adding one.
Twelve thirty-three dash, do we have a number yet?
Um, it's.
Thirty-six, one oh two. We have a contractual services in there, would it help, or well, maybe we don't. No, it's got zero balance.
Yeah, that's that line.
But it's there.
We can add it to that.
Yeah.
What is, what is that account number, Amy, I'm sorry?
John, you got it, yeah.
It's right here, it's twelve thirty-three, thirty-six, one oh two.
Thirty-six, one oh two, I see it now, yeah.
And how, well, do you have the amount?
Four thirty-six, six nine. So I'll try again, let me start over, please. I will make a motion to approve as resubmitted on second reading with the following changes. Fund number twelve three three dash oh one two four lit, and that is sheriff jail. With the exception with following changes, twelve three three dash one seven, three zero zero, merit matrix pay reduced to zero. Twelve three three dash three six, one oh two contractual services increased to four three zero, six six nine.
Second.
Yeah. Have a first by Mrs. Graves, a second by Mr. Bates, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. I do believe we're done.
At least one thing. Can't believe I'm saying this, Ron can back me up on this here, and I'm not talking about T-shirt Express. Um, our commissary fund, I think I've been probably one of the best sheriffs and uh uh using that money, that's just, I'm having to come over here and stand in front of the council and ask. We will continue to do that, but uh we spent millions out of that account just to benefit the taxpayers, sheriff's office and our buildings. Uh, and even bars, we bought cars out of that, if they come to me and they need something done, we do it if it's, it's able to be done within the statute, so we'll continue to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before he leaves, I was a little late, sorry.
What?
They did request an increase in part-time from twenty dollars to twenty-five dollars in the jail.
And thank you.
In case you have any questions.
No question, we have no question.
Make the motion.
No, you're fine, just so you don't have to come back for that later.
Resumed it.
Okay, next up is Board of Commissioners.
The most.
Right?
Surveyor, I thought, nope, I was, I was there though.
And I believe they have the next one, two, three, four, right?
The page.
Forty?
Forty.
Thank you.
Uh, second, second.
Yeah.
Hi Kevin, how are you, both want to state your name for the record, please?
Ron West, Johnson County Commissioner. Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner.
And you are going to be doing one oh oh one, one one three eight, one one five seven, then forty-seven oh two?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Amy?
They don't have any changes from first reading.
Okay, what pages are we on, Michelle?
Forty.
Forty?
No.
Um, I'm the liaison for the commissioners and I'm only going to say it one time today, poster child for zero-based budgeting, and we thank you for your help. What we can do, what if, when we work together, we can really uh do wonders with this budget and, and represent our taxpayers well, so thank you very much for that. Um, if there are no changes, I could make a motion to approve, but I'll divert our.
Okay, well, we will open the floor for discussion for those funds.
You probably want to zero out um that million dollars.
Oh, yeah, that probably would be good. In the general, right, one one?
Eleven fifty-seven.
Oh, one two two.
Yeah, good dodge. Okay?
Good catch.
Anything on overtime or part-time rates or anything for them?
No.
You know? Okay. I'm prepared to take a motion?
I can make a motion, um, fund number, oh, to approve as resubmitted on second reading with the following change.
As approved on first reading.
With the following change.
As approved on first reading with the following change.
As approved on first reading with the following change.
Correct.
Fund number one oh oh one dash oh one two two, Board of Commissioners. Fund eleven thirty-eight, oh one two two, Board of Commissioners. Fund eleven fifty-seven, oh one two two, with the following change. Line item, one one five seven, one four, four zero zero, reduced to zero. And fund number four seven oh two, employee self-funded health insurance.
Second, second.
First by Mrs. Graves, the second by Mr. Dittner's, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your support. Okay, Johnson County Redevelopment Commission.
Page forty-two.
Thirty, that's a, that's a vet, oh, sorry, I'm not following today. I'll be okay.
You're alright.
Walls, Johnson County Commissioner, RDC Vice President.
Okay, uh, no changes as, okay? Alright, so I'm prepared to take them, our discussion?
Yep.
Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
Move to approve, uh, four one one two, J C Redevelopment Mission.
Second. As presented, as approved on first.
Right down there.
Okay. Remember first by Mr. Dittner's, a second by Mr. Bates, all in favor, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Veterans Affairs.
Page thirty-eight.
Hello, I'm Megan with uh Veterans Affairs and I have no revisions.
Thank you, Megan. Part-time rates look okay?
They're part-time.
Okay. Here to take a motion?
Move to approve one zero zero one dash zero one two zero, Veterans Affairs, um, as presented on first reading.
As approved on first reading. Second. We have a first by Mr. Dittner's, a second by Mr. Bates, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have weights and measures, I believe the next two line items, eleven fifty-seven and forty-two oh two.
Page thirty-nine.
Hi Greg.
Hello, Greg Nelson, weights and measures, no changes from the first reading.
Discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I move that we approve four two oh two, weights and measures, uh, as approved on first reading.
Uh, we need eleven, uh, eleven fifty-seven, food and beverage weights and measures.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then the forty-two oh two weights and measures.
And, and forty-two oh two weights and measure.
As approved on first reading, correct? We have a first by Mr. Bates?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graves, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, General Museum.
Forty-five, page forty-five.
Uh, I don't see anyone here from the museum, so I am assuming since no one is here and Amy, you have nothing to report to us, that this motion would be approved or uh, motion would be accept us approved on first reading?
Yes, and he has part-time but no change.
Part-time with no change, okay.
Motion to approve, as approved on first reading, fund one oh oh one dash oh one two five, museum.
Second.
The first by Mrs. Graves, the second by Mr. Bates, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Next up, we have emergency management, and I believe that's the next two funds.
Page forty-six in your budget books. Um, I did hear that Stephanie was not going to be able to attend to present today. Was not going to be able to attend to present today. But I can tell you she has no changes from first reading.
Any reference to part-time?
Um, I don't think there were any changes.
Discussion? Here of hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
Would approve, uh, one, zero, zero, one dash, zero, one, two, seven, Emergency Management and eleven fifty-two. Emergency planning, like to know, um. As approved on first read.
I have a first by Mr. Dittmers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Hearing no further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes. Okay, and next up is Planning and Zoning.
Page thirty-five, I believe.
And it's Fund eleven fifty-seven, oh, one, one, seven. Twelve, oh, seven, forty-nine, oh, one, and eleven ninety-seven. Hi, Michelle.
Hi, Michelle Hanser, Director of Planning and Zoning. I have no changes from the first readings. Um, there was a part-time increase that we discussed last week, but my overall budget was not increased to, not for that part-time increase.
And uh, all, and that's the same for all of your funds? Okay. That being said, further discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
Move to approve as approved on the first reading, funds. One, one, five, seven, oh, one, one, seven. One, two, oh, seven. Four, nine, oh, one. And one, one, nine, seven.
Have a first by Mr. Myers.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graves. Further discussion?
Is, is this another poster child?
Yeah, kind of.
Yes, it is. I, I was gonna say it once today, though. I promised, I've already used it.
Favor say aye. Opposed? Passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Courthouse Maintenance and looks like they have the next three funds, one, oh, oh, one, oh, one, two, three. One, one, three, eight, oh, one, two, three, and one, one, three, eight, oh, one, four, one.
Jason Miller, Courthouse Maintenance, I do not have.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you only have two, that one, that third one was I T, my bad.
Page forty-three in your budget book.
On my two, I have no changes.
Okay.
Sure about I T.
And your part-time didn't change any?
No.
No.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion on the two funds that Jason spoke of.
Move to approve, one, zero, zero, one dash, zero, one, two, three, Courthouse Maintenance and eleven thirty-eight. Dash, zero, one, two, three, Courthouse Maintenance as approved. You first.
We have a first by Mr. Dittmers.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graves. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Next up is the Cume Cap Development I T slash G I S.
Page seventy-two in your budget book.
Jeff West, I T G I S Administrator. My budget.
No changes?
Nope.
Part-time, anything need to be recognized to part-time, no?
No, no.
Okay. Uh, further discussion?
Did we, uh, as I was discussing before, did we include a new, uh?
That's in our budget and yes, sir, that we'll be getting to that. Yes, he, he did after his recommendation. Prepared to take a motion?
Yeah, move to approve eleven thirty-eight dash, zero, one, four, one, Information Technologies, G I S, um. As approved on first reading. Second.
We have a first by Mr. Dittmers, a second by Mr. Bates. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Next up is, uh, the General Fund Fleet.
Page seventy-three.
Hi, Bob Valinsky, Johnson County Fleet.
Hi Bob.
I had one statement I needed, well, maybe two. You let me stand up here for thirty minutes last time and you didn't say anything about me being a poster child. I'm so very disappointed. Then I get to hear you say, I'm not gonna say it again today.
I'll say it for.
Thank you.
And you hear me let you talk thirty minutes and not to schedule fifteen.
Well, you know.
Everything is golden. I guess whatever you guys did on the first reading.
Okay. You good, Amy?
His part-time rate did go up.
To?
It went from. Twenty-two, forty-seven to twenty-three, fifty-nine.
That was a year ago.
Budget stayed the same though.
Budget stayed the same.
Oh, because I've been. And I need to add more to my, my part-time budget because I want to hire Chief Barnhart to do my numbers and stuff for me next time around. Now, that's all I have. Whatever you guys have.
Okay, so any discussion? No further discussion, I am prepared to take a motion. And there's no changes as approved on the first, or as approved on first reading.
Motion to approve one, oh, oh, one dash, oh, one, four, four, Fleet, as approved on first reading, poster child.
Second. We have a first by Mrs. Graves, a second by Mr. Bates. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes, thank you, sir.
Thanks, have a great day.
Okay, we have Public Safety Communications, nine, one, one, it's the next two funds. Hi Heath.
Hello, Heath Brandt, nine, one, one Director. I have no changes, moved approved on first reading.
Again, he was one of those that. We met and we met and we talked and we talked and we met and finally everyone had an understanding and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Discussion on these two funds? But further discussion on these two funds?
No, I'd make a motion to. Prove one, zero, zero, one, zero, nine, one, one, Johnson County, uh, Public Safety. And twelve, twenty-two statewide, uh, nine, one, one, uh, as approved on the first read.
We have a motion by Mr. Dittmers.
Well, second.
A second by Mr. Myers. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Next up, oh, our favorite highway guy.
Page seventy-four.
Hi Luke.
Good morning, Luke Maston, Highway Supervisor. Um, the only change I have just for reference, uh. One, zero, zero, one, General Highway down through eleven thirty-five, Cume Bridge. Uh, the only changes from first reading are what I mentioned and what Mike discussed, uh, in his presentation this morning. The, uh, twelve million dollars that was proposed to be budgeted. In twenty twenty-six would go down to, uh, seven hundred thousand in General Fund. And then a new bond payment line item for three point three million would be added to the General Fund. So that we can make those payments starting next year.
Do you have all that, Amy?
I emailed it to her.
Okay, thank you. We need it for the motion. We will open the floor for further discussion. You have no other changes on anything else as.
Yes, there is. In edit, um, we're doing the same thing. As based on conversations that Mike and I had. So in one, 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 two, there was a. Make the Smith Valley Road line item budget for fourteen some million dollars that will go to zero. Based on, uh, both Mike and I's thinking at the moment, I'll come back in January and re-appropriate. Both that twelve million in cash and a General Fund and. That fourteen million in edit. That will make his spreadsheet and revenue projection calculations work, uh, and we won't run into the issue that we had.
Okay.
At first reading.
Okay, uh, I do have a little bit on further discussion, just want to point, just want to ask you a couple of questions and I think we have visited this, but. I don't feel like we had any definitive closure on it and you may not know, but you have a couple of specific positions over there. That are showing no, not being filled.
Yes.
So there's been some concern expressed about funding those line items and. Not having anyone. Is there a reason? Do you have plans? Can you talk about it a little bit?
There are two administrative positions in the office that I'm in the process of filling now. There is one position in engineering, one of the designer positions. Uh, as I discussed at first reading, we're having trouble filling that. Uh, one, another one of those opened up this spring. Uh, so those two positions have been challenges. The administrative positions, I'm in the process of filling those now.
Well, if there's anything we can do to help, those line items, you know, we'll be happy to. Don't know what we could do anymore than we're doing, but.
We're, we're gonna, our plan is to continue to try to fill the two designer positions as they are and at the salaries that they're at. Uh, but the reason I brought it up at first reading is because we're not having a lot of luck, so we may. Come to you at a later date and propose some potential changes, uh, in those job descriptions and. Uh, what those positions do, but for now, we're not proposing.
Like a reorganization of those two positions?
Potentially, yes.
All right.
Um. Michelle had a, a question regarding the payoff of the bond. Uh, Jeff Peters confirmed that it can be paid off either at eight years or ten years. And that the decision on which of those we choose is made when we get closer to when the bond is, it goes out. They'll do an evaluation of how much that. That cost is and we'll go with whatever the cheaper option is.
Thank you, Luke.
And then part-time rates, I didn't discuss previously. Um, I have four rates that I typically set. I propose two dollar an hour increases to all of those. Um, they are all still under what we're paying our full-time employees excluding the snowplow. Part-time snowplow driver, could be very close to the same hourly rate. But would not make overtime.
So Amy, with those changes to the budget for Mike's discussion this morning and what Luke just reiterated, I'm gonna need you once again to please. State the numbers for our motion if you can, please.
Um, I would take. This one by itself.
Which one is it? The one, oh, oh, one, oh, two, oh, one?
Yes.
Okay, so that she would like that one by itself.
So that motion would be to reduce line item four, nine, one, five, two, Smith Valley Road to seven hundred thousand?
Okay.
And to add account three, zero, 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 bond payments or three point three million.
Am I to say?
It would be as, as, as approved on first.
Reading.
With the following changes, correct?
Okay, so, um, I move to approve. As approved on first reading, uh, ten, oh, one, oh, two, oh, one, General Fund Highway with the following changes. Uh, line item ten, oh, one, forty-nine, one, five, two, Smith Valley Road be reduced from twelve million down to seven hundred thousand even. And then adding a line item ten, oh, one, three, zero, 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 what's it called?
Bond payment?
Bond payment, uh, three point three million.
Second.
We have a first. By, uh, Mr. Mallers and a second by Mrs. Graves. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes. Okay, moving on to the eleven, one, 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 two, one, one, seven, three, one, one, six, nine, one, one, seven, six, and one, one, three, five. Those, as you indicated, as the same, they're the same, nothing has been changed.
Ex- excluding one, one, one.
One, oh, one, two is gonna have a reduction.
Oh, there you go. So one, 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 two, we need to do separately as well, correct? All right.
So I move to approve, as approved on first reading. Uh, with the following changes, one, 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 two, the Lit Economic Development. Line item one, 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 two, forty-nine, one, five, two, Smith Valley Road, reduce the requested budget from fourteen million, four ninety-four, nine, forty-one. Down to zero.
Second.
We have a first. And Mr. Mallers, a second by Mr. Dittmers. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes. Okay, moving on. Sure as I lump those together again, you're gonna say there's a change, right?
Not anymore.
Okay.
Move to approve eleven seventy-three, M V H restricted and eleven sixty-nine, Local Road and Street, uh, as approved on first reading.
You can do eleven seventy-six and eleven thirty-five.
Oh, and eleven seventy-six County Highway. And. Eleven thirty-five Humorlet Bridge.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Mallers, a second by Mr. Bates. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Ayes?
That was an aye, I forgot to vote.
We got you. We assume if it's not an a, it's an a. Passes, thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next up is the Animal Shelter and it looks like the Animal Shelter. Goes from four, oh, oh, eight down to forty-nine, fifteen.
Page eighty-six and eighty-seven in your budget books.
Okay. Here we go, Clutchy, Director, Animal Shelter, Animal Control. We have no changes from first reading.
Actually, I forgot to go with you. I recalculated Fika and Perf.
Okay.
Fika should be seventy-nine, oh, sixty-one.
Somebody dropped that down.
Sixty-one, I got it.
Seventy-nine, oh, sixty-one.
He's got.
And Perf should be one, oh, five, six, seventy.
One, oh, five, six, seventy.
And that's for everything, right?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, oh, eight, Animal Shelter. Should I go ahead and take all of them?
Yep.
Twenty-five, ten, uh, L E C E, Animal Control, twenty-five, sixteen. Animal Control deferral, forty-one, oh, one, Animal Shelter General Donation. Forty-one, two, two, Latour Memorial Fund. Forty-nine, one, five, Animal Adoption Fee, as approved on first reading with the following changes. Item four, oh, oh, eight, one, four, two hundred, reduced to seven, nine, oh, six, one. Item number four, oh, oh, eight, one, four, three hundred. Reduced to one, oh, five, six, seven, zero.
Second.
We have a first by Mrs. Graves, a second by Mr. Bates. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes, thank you.
I assume we didn't have any changes to our part-time?
No.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, next up is the Clerk.
Page one. Hey, Trina.
Good morning, Trina McGlocklin, Clerk.
Okay, Trina, you'll be doing, uh. Down to twelve seventeen, correct?
Correct.
One, oh, oh, one, and then all the way down to twelve seventeen.
I have no changes from first readings. Um, I think with the exception of part-time, that will be changed, but. Don't need any additional.
You agree with that, Amy?
Yeah, so she had ten, ten dollars to twenty, so that'll now be twelve dollars.
Okay. No other changes? Yeah, discussion?
No changes, uh, from first read.
No, there's no other changes, since it's approval of first read.
Right.
So is that your motion?
I can make it.
Okay. Mr. Bates has made a motion to, uh. Prove what was approved at first reading for one, oh, oh, one, oh, one, oh, one, oh, one, oh, one, one, four. One, 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 nine, and one, two, one, seven. 0101, 1001, 0114, 1119, and 1217.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Bates, a second by Mr. Dittmers, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is our county assessor.
Good morning, Mike Watkins, county assessor.
I understand there was something going on like at past the midnight hour.
Emails I didn't even get.
Minor stuff, minor stuff.
Okay.
I do have one change from the first reading. Uh, one line, a salary in general fund. When we submitted it, the revised, probably three times revised version that you guys got on the uh, the first reading, it was accidentally left zero. It should not be. We're not, I'm not asking to add an employee. This is an existing employee that I just want to make sure they keep getting a paycheck next year.
It's a error.
Yes, it was, it was a math error. I own that, I should have seen it.
Um, and unfortunately that happens, you know, you're human.
It does.
That happens.
Uh, I won't admit to that part, but yeah. Very few people would.
Item maybe?
It's uh, 11281, personal property specialist.
And the amount?
Forty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty-two.
And that's per WIS guidelines.
Exactly per WIS guidelines, yes.
And that's the only thing that needs to be noted, correct?
That is the only thing of note, uh, right now, yes.
Okay. Amy, part-time, okay, no other changes? All right. Further discussion? If none, prepared to take a motion? The two funds?
Uh, I'm making the motion.
Okay.
Improve 1001 dash 10, sorry, 0109 assessor. And uh, reassessment, 1224, uh, as approved on first reading with the following change, uh, adding a salary to line item 1001, 11281, and that amount is 48,282.
Will we include 1131 in your motion?
Did I not get the third one? There's a three.
Yeah. County officials disclosed, that was my, my fault.
No, I'm sorry, yep.
I'll second that motion.
We have a first by Mr. Dittmers, a second by Mrs. Graves. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Oh, also, I want to thank Michelle in particular. She has done a great job helping me out this year on the budget. It's been really appreciated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always good to hear.
Yeah.
But I'll be taking you off on Christmas.
All right.
Okay.
Did I change that? You do?
Yes, thank you. Next up is our auditor and she goes down to fund 1181.
Page four.
From 1157 down to 1181.
Elizabeth Alby, Johnson County Auditor. I have no changes from first reading.
I won't say post or child.
Well, I.
I heard there was some angst over that and I will.
Can I just hear you say it?
You get a gold star. You're a post or child for zero base budget. Next three times today.
Discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
Motion to approve as approved on first reading, fund number 11570102 auditor. 1216 auditors and eligible deductions, 1217 training auditor, 1181 auditors plat map maintenance.
Second.
We have a first by Mrs. Graves, a second by Mr. Bates. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, thank you, Elizabeth. Next up is our treasurer and uh, it looks like she goes from 11570103 down to 1160.
Page seven in your budget book.
Good morning, uh, Kim Hamilton County Treasurer. I only have the two. 1157.
I'm sorry.
13.
I'm getting excited, it's almost lunchtime.
I have no changes from the, what was approved in the first reading.
Discussion?
Moved to approve 1157 dash zero one zero three treasurer and 1217 dash zero one oh three, EO training, um, as approved on first reading.
We have a first by Mr. Dittmers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mallers. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have our recorder. She's from Enhanced Access. All the way through Recorder's Perpetuation, it looks like it's four funds.
Starts on page eight.
Hi, Teresa.
Voice of Peach Farm Recorder. Um, I don't have any changes from first reading. I, I do need some clarified, little confused. Um, so my job descriptions were submitted in August for reclassification. Actually, before that, but. And I was told to angel after the approval, so. I'm not doing with the procedures. So if those get reclassified, will that go into effect for the 2027 pay?
Uh, I think, and correct me, correct me if I'm wrong here. I think uh, if in fact, we're gonna try to get to all reclassifications before the first pay, if that is suitable. Uh, shouldn't be that many. A lot of people, and, and I'm not saying.
I guess three.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, just want to say this out loud because a lot of, I think there's some confusion with adding or changing to a job description when it comes to something other than additional education, licensing, uh, massive reconstruction, new hire, something like that. So, just so people aren't confused, reclassification and changing a job description are two complete different things. So assuming it results in a job reclassification, then we will make every attempt to get that done.
Yes, and I updated my job.
You just found your. Procedure as was presented and it will, it will go through the system.
Okay, all right.
Is that not the way? It's, okay, all right. So, no other changes, part-time?
Yes, um, so her part-time currently is from $9.17, so we'll just change that from 12 to 17.
Okay. All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion for every, for the four funds up to 1189.
Yeah, I'd move to approve 1154 Enhanced Access, 1160 Identification Security. That's 1217, 0104 Training, and 1189, um, Recorder's Records, uh, perpetuation, uh, as approved on first reading.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Dittmers, a second by Mr. Bates, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next up is our surveyor. And I believe he goes all the way down to 1202. So that would be five funds that we're discussing.
Surveyor is on page 21, sorry.
Oh.
Trying to do some math.
That's hard.
Hello, Greg, can you state your name for the record, please?
Greg Cantwell, Johnson County Surveyor. I have no further comment from the first reading.
Oh, and we do have a revised page on the surveyor corner perpetuation fund, a revised page 23.
Has the revision been submitted, Amy, or we need, it has been?
It's.
It's been, so the approval will be as resubmitted?
Yes, they're not fine.
Yeah. And what number is that one?
1202.
1202, so we can take them all but 1202? And then 1202 will be as resubmitted, so the first four can be as approved on first reading. Discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared for a motion on the first four funds.
Moved to approve 1157 dash zero one zero six, um, surveyor 1217, uh, dash zero one zero six, uh, 4905 Certification, Certification Fund, and 1157 0119. You want to take those, you want me to go?
Yes, no, those, those.
Stuff in there.
Yes, please.
Uh, now, those are as approved on first reading.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Dittmers, a second by Mr. Myers. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll do the 1202 Surveyor Corner Perpetuation Fund separately because it was resubmitted on second reading.
Moved to approve 1202 Surveyor, uh, Corner Perpetuation, uh, as we submitted on second reading.
Second.
Further discussion?
The resubmission was 59720.
I believe so.
That's what I have.
Yes, 11th.
You already have the number?
Yep.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, Greg, thank you. Next up would be our council budget. And I do not believe that there has been any changes since approved at first reading.
Page 92, we're at the very end.
Remind. 23.
Discussion? Amy's got her hand up.
What we're gonna do, something like the menu?
I don't know, it's what she's talking about. We got a sidebar going on.
So, something that Taylor brought up, um, after the last meeting, we talked about them being employed as of June 1st.
Oh, stipends, we're talking about stipends.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I'm with you.
Um, and the payments, but we didn't specify, like they still had to be currently employed at the time of payment.
I guess I just assumed that was a given, that they would have to be currently employed.
We like to assume.
I understand.
Employed by June 1st, 2025. Five. Okay.
And still be employed at the time of dispersment, and I don't know if that was any.
Without interruption?
Without interruption, correct?
Employed without interruption?
Yes.
That was July 1 or?
Continuous employment.
Um, I had said July 1, but that's only five months, so it's June 1st.
Okay, for six months, okay.
Till when? July 1 would be six months, wouldn't it?
It is July 1st.
Yes.
Six months doesn't really matter as much if it's the fact that they're still employed. So you have to be employed by whenever, through.
When it's dispersed.
We just want to make sure if someone is here and then they leave and then they come back, because we've had that happen.
And I think the council had mentioned six months.
I can hear you, honey.
Uh, this council, you guys had.
Had mentioned six months.
So I think that's where that came from.
Yeah, okay, so we have that date, right?
So, yes, July 1st.
Okay, so is this where we need to reduce? Where we need to decide on the stipend amount itself? And we need to reduce?
Yes, September 17.
Um.
All July. The, was it the million?
We need to reduce the million in both the 1233 and the general fund.
Did you guys hear that?
No, we were counting on our fingers.
We need to re.
Reduce the million dollars.
In the, no, in the 1233 and the general fund.
Do we need, I, I might have missed this while John and I were doing math. Do we need to state the date we're going to make the payout to these employees for the stipend? I think we, I know we did in our motion.
I know we had said spring, March, April, sometime, giving time to get the budget in and the first regularly scheduled pays out of the way, but I don't know that we came up with an exact date.
Yeah, I'd, um.
And if you need to look at the cap, the payroll payout dates, we can always make a note. We can always do that if you guys are okay with it at final adoption.
Yeah, yeah, or we even could say by the end of March 2026 and leave a little more flexibility.
I don't hate that idea, but I do know when council did the motion way back when for the $750 stipend, there was a date included for payout.
So how about we put that in by the end of March and then if that needs to be changed at final adoption because of the way payroll lays out, let us know.
Have we voted to have a stipend?
Uh.
We did.
We voted to have a stipend, but we have not voted on the amount.
When did we vote to have a stipend?
The end of Thursday.
Stay home.
When you approved your budget, it's in your budget.
Uh-huh, when we approved our budget with the stipended amount in it.
And I have that you are a no vote on that, John.
Okay.
We vote, I, I hear my notes from that, that it was full-time employees. They had to be employees for six months, Amy to provide date for payment. No elected officials would get the stipend with the exception of the coroner, the surveyor, and perhaps their chief, the coroner's chief deputy and the surveyor's chief deputy.
Because that was all that qualified for.
Right.
Time salary, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So, here's my notes. Full-time only and elected officials. Which I think it was only going to be a few of them.
Yeah, there was only two.
Okay.
And the chief deputy coroner.
Okay.
Uh, they had to be employed as of July 1st of '25 in continuous. So we're kind of adding, and they still have to be employed as of the payment dates.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, let's clarify that here because if you have six months and then it's not that you still have to be employed in January, what you are saying right now is that you still have to be employed by the dispersment by the end of March. So it's not going to be the case that someone leaves and then is owed that, you still have to be.
Right.
I just want to make that clear.
When you get your paycheck for that amount, you have to be employed by the county. You had to admit that six months and then you have to be employed by the county when you get that.
And I have 1,500 to chase them.
Right.
So, um, I guess the discussion here would be.
What one?
And, and. Is the information that she provided, assuming this vote goes through on those dates, the payout and the stipulations, uh, if there's any changes that needs to be made to that.
Just the, I forget if the stipend is a thousand dollars.
No. The stipend, we allotted enough money in there, we first disclosed in the guidelines, it was a thousand. But once we got through budget, uh, it was discussed that we would, we would make the final decision at this point right here because the hopes was to, or the hopes by some was to increase it, to, to increase that amount. But we would have to wait and see where we stood within the budget to, to have that discussion. A, are we going to continue with it? Uh, B, are we going to do it a thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand, what, whatever? So that's where we are at this point. Uh, so I'm gonna open the floor.
Do, do we know what the dollar amount is at 1,500?
We do not, we didn't get our budget book or the new fiscal plan till late last night, so there's not been time to run the numbers.
Okay.
Do you have any input on it at all? Yeah.
We did say originally a thousand dollars though, right?
Right.
The minimum, I think.
The minimum, yeah. Uh, Amy, would there be a chance to get those numbers ran? And then revisit this one after?
After we did.
Mining units? Would that be out of ordinary to do that, Tiffany?
You could take a recess, recess.
I don't know how quick we can get those numbers, just to give us a ballpark of where we stand.
Yeah, if you go up to 1,500, you'll have more.
No.
I'll be quiet, it's.
Well.
Michelle?
Yes.
Didn't you have a number of the employees that would qualify?
It was approximate.
Three hundred and some, I thought you said.
So what would be the possibility of you, Mike, whomever in the computer system coming up with a ballpark on that?
Uh, we can do it because I've already had payroll kind of start making notes and stuff, so.
Okay.
And I can get with you and show you my notes just to help.
So before we actually take a motion and have a full discussion. So before we actually take a motion and have a full discussion, do you think we could get those statistics, get that information and then revisit this one after the binding units?
Yes.
Let us do that.
I would prefer doing that and give everybody a chance to think about it.
Yes.
Is that, anybody have any input on that?
And just question, just for our clarification, Amy. I'm pretty sure I heard what Mike said, but I just want to make sure as we start crunching numbers, the stipends are coming out of the the council's budget, which which comes out of Food and Beverage Fund. So we got to watch that cash balance and that budget to make sure. But right now, seven hundred and fifty thousand is baked into the numbers that we got early this morning.
Yes, and that, that's not the only thing that comes out of Food and Budget.
Right, but I'm just saying, um just so we can get our mind wrapped around where the money's coming from, what we can afford to spend or not spend. Is that accurate, what I just described?
Yes.
Yeah.
That helps me.
So, we will hold on further discussion for this until we get those numbers. We will come back here at one o'clock for binding units, and then when that is over, we will take the council's final budget. And um what else do I need to mention? Anything?
So like, so we could go ahead and do um twelve seventeen, oh one thirty-five as approved on first reading?
Where, oh.
Page ninety-three.
Oh, I gotcha. I got you. We can go ahead and do twelve seventeen, twelve thirty-three.
And then those other two will be reduced to zero, so you can do that.
Okay. All right, so if, let's take twelve seventeen and twelve thirteen, because they're going to be as approved on first reading, correct?
Twelve seventeen.
Seventeen.
Just twelve seventeen as approved on first reading. Okay.
Move to approve twelve seventeen, one thirty-five. Uh Training for the Council as um as approved on first reading.
Second.
Uh we have a first by Mr. Mallers, a second by Mr. Myers. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one passes.
All right, move to approve twelve thirty-three, one thirty-five Lit Council and ten oh one, one thirty-five General Fund Council with as approved on first reading with the following changes. Line item uh for twelve thirty-three, one thirty-five, line item twelve thirty-three, thirty, one thirty-five Council Appropriations. Uh reduce twenty twenty-six requested budget from one million down to zero. And then for ten oh one, one thirty-five General Fund Council, line item ten oh one, thirty, one thirty-five Council Appropriations. Also reduce that from uh the twenty-six budget of one million dollars down to zero.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Mallers, a second by Mr. Bates. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. So the only one we will have to do when we come back is Food and Beverage, eleven fifty-seven.
Yes, perfect.
But
Page ninety-four.
Hang on, hang on, what?
Page ninety-four, you have two more budgets.
Okay.
Bond.
And that is the bond and the lit, right?
Yes.
It is.
Okay.
Any changes in either one of those?
No changes.
No changes in either one of them?
Moved approved forty-six eighteen bond three as approved on first reading.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, we have a first by Mr. Dittmers, a second by Mr. Bates. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to twelve thirty-three.
Moved approved twelve thirty-three dash zero five two nine Lit Correctional and Rehab Facilities uh as approved on first reading.
The first by Mr. Dittmers.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graves. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. So the only thing we're lacking is twelve seventeen, or I'm sorry, no. It is eleven fifty-seven, one thirty-five, no?
Eleven fifty-seven, oh one thirty-five.
Right.
You're gonna wait on.
Food and Beverage Council.
Do you want to do the part-time rates?
Yes, please.
For DMs? And all the others, so.
That's on the blue paper in the front, right?
Right.
Amy, you're gonna have to guide me through this, as what what we need to do.
Okay. The changes are on the clerk. The ten dollars is going to twelve dollars.
Okay.
That's for the clerk, clerk election board and perpetuation fund. All the tens are going to twelve.
Okay.
Uh the cooperative extension is going from ten fifty to twelve dollars.
Uh huh.
The coroner will be the twenty-five rates.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The coroner is keeping the twenty-five rates.
Okay.
Of course, unified. Uh there's no longer a twelve dollars, the minimum will be fifteen, and there's no longer a thirty dollars. Uh Recorder's Perpetuation, it's going from nine dollars to twelve dollars.
Hang on. Okay, all right, got it?
Under the shift differential, the coroner is staying at seventy dollars, which is the twenty-five rate.
Okay.
And that's all the changes.
And there's no changes to the board per diems, correct? Or we want to do them separate?
Nope, you can do them all together.
Okay, no changes on this, okay. All right, so based on the information Amy just gave us, and what we've heard from people prior to discussion.
Motion first.
No, we want to also have some discussion first, if anybody wants to have any.
I think um my discussion point would be these are all reasonable requests.
I'm gonna concur with you.
No further discussion, so our motion would need to read, uh I believe, as approved on first reading with the exceptions that Amy just stated, correct?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first by Michelle Graves, a second by Mr. Bates. Again, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Motion to recess.
And I need a motion to recess to reconvene at one o'clock?
One o'clock.
Motion.
No. So that's a separate meeting. You're gonna recess to come back once I get the numbers to approve your budget.
Oh, so we need to do this last one before.
So recess until after uh the one o'clock meeting concludes, right?
Okay, how about that?
Definitely follow.
How about we recess, okay, the motion needs to be recessed until we conclude the binding units that begin at one. Okay, so I'll need that motion.
So moved.
Um Mr. Bates?
Mr. Bates.
Made it first. Uh I believe Michelle Graves made it second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And opposed.
No.
Okay, so see everyone back here at one o'clock.
Amy, don't leave.